Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands for a nation, unbreakable, indivisible, limited and just for all.
Kim, could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 10th, and this is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 p.m. start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on December 6th of 2024. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public. And the notice has been marked into evidence as B1.
Thank you, Kim. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman. Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Councilwoman Princey.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Stomato.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Okay, we have a quorum.
I'm here.
Oh, and Chairman likes to... The most important... Yeah.
Okay, I'm here, I'm here, Kim. Could we swear on the staff, please, Mike?
I see the two Matt, Jean Roux, Francisco, Eric, and Cameron. Do you guys swear any testimony? You get tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, we do.
All right, thank you. Do we have correspondence, Kim?
Yes, Chairman. Okay, so we have four items that have requested to carry to January 7th in the new year. And the first item would be under Old Business, and that is Item E on the Agenda, Case P2024-088-0088, sorry. Address is 87 Bright Street, and it's an amendment to a previous approval, and they have requested to carry with preservation of notice to January 7th in the new year. Then, under New Business, we have Item 13. That is Case P2024-0070 for Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan Amendment. And that's address 415 Palisade Avenue. They've requested to carry with preservation of notice to January 7th in 2025. And then, at the end of the Agenda, we have Item 18, Case P2024-0006. A preliminary major site plan approval with variances at 38 Cottage Street has requested to carry with preservation of notice to the January 7th meeting in 2025. And then, the very last item on the Agenda, Item 19, it is Case P2024-0156. Address is 545 Newark Avenue. They are requesting to carry with preservation of notice to January 7th in the new year.
All right, thank you, Kim.
First one that was carried, the second one that was carried, is that 4G?
Yeah, that's Palisade. 415 Palisade.
415 Palisade.
The applicant is 377 Ogden. Okay, so let's get right into Old Business. Item A, Case P2024-0036, is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances for 20 Carbon Place. This was heard on November 12th with testimony taken. Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners, Council, staff. My name is Gerard Pizzillo. I'm an attorney with Genova Burns. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, 20 Carbon Place Corp. As you indicated, Commissioner, we did have testimony in the November 12th hearing. Witnesses, our notice was provided, witnesses sworn, and we did get into some of the testimony. We'll pick up right where we left off. There's just one housekeeping item I would just like to bring up. Although notice was submitted and properly justified at the hearing last time, post that meeting, we had a discussion with City Planning, as well as our design team, and we did point out a additional deviation. Although the prior devia... the prior notice did have a catch-all provision, and we did believe... we do believe that the deviation was properly categorized in that last notice. We did take the opportunity, since we had the time, to renotice with that deviation. The good news from the plant... from your perspective, nothing that you've reviewed or have looked at has changed. The plans don't change. You've already heard testimony as to the proposed deviation, and it's the map. Map three of the plan shows a bright yellow line of a right-of-way between Fisk and Carbon. We cannot accommodate that because of the building that's behind us. The plans that we've provided and the testimony that you've heard so far does bake that deviation in. But we did specifically notice it as a deviation for purposes of this meeting. I did upload my affidavit of publication mailing to the portal. I do have the original here. And with Chairman's permission, if I can approach and present it to Council for his review as well.
Sure. Council, anything?
So Chairman, it does sound as though that the second notice was done out of an abundance of caution. So with that, I believe we are up to A2 in terms of board markings, Council.
A5. A5.
Is it?
Yes.
PowerPoints.
Power... that we did admit some PowerPoints, and we'll be picking up with A4.
So I'm gonna mark it A5 with today's date for purposes of the record. And Council, I just want to make sure for purposes of the record that...
Beat me to it.
Well, then go ahead, Chairman.
So, Council, just before we hear any more testimony, the only members that are on the dais tonight that were at the previous meeting were myself, Commissioner Torres, and Commissioner Stomato. So that's three. We need two more. Doc, did you have a chance to...
I did. I reviewed.
Did you?
I did as well, yes.
You are?
I did.
Okay, Eddie's in. Doctor?
I did.
Okay, so we have a full board for you tonight.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. Thank you all. And with that said, I will call Jeezu, who will continue his architectural testimony.
Good evening, sir. I know we qualified you last time, but I do have to check to make sure that your license is current tonight? Yes. Okay, thank you. You're still qualified. Thank you. And you still are under oath.
Good evening, board members. We'll continue my testimony here. Last time, we stopped at Slide 5. We were discussing about the deviation that Council just pointed out. On the left, it shows the right-of-way as highlighted in the redevelopment plan map. That is right in the middle of the site. If you can see my mouse here. Due to the fact that 49 Fisk, which is immediately to the north of our site, the right-of-way would not be visibly able to connect all the way to 49... to the Fisk Street to the north. On top of that, we have also demonstrated the fact that now, if we were to put... I'm sorry. If we were to put the right-of-way at the current location, sorry, it will create a dead-end issue with a very narrow and long public space that is sandwiched between two 12-story buildings, meaning it receives... Sorry, I don't know why it keeps automatically going. Let me just stop at the right slide, please. My apologies. It is also somewhat far away from the pedestrian traffic along West End Avenue, a little bit isolated for the rest of the pedestrian traffic that we're trying to attract here. And also because of the configuration, that the building actually is very close to our neighbor, both to the north and also to the NJCU building to the east. Let me quickly recapture why we want to move the plaza to the east. As you can see here, represented with the images to the right, that the plaza is conveniently located closer for the public access from West End Avenue. And also, it's also very close, the existing open space, that it belongs to our neighbor on the east, so that really creates a bigger open space for the whole neighborhood. It will be better proportioned. It's going to be a little bit more wider and less shallow. And in terms of the size, it's also slightly bigger than what was proposed in the originally approved scheme to accommodate better public activities. It is also receives full morning and all the way to early afternoon sun, and it will be... the plaza will be able to be shaded in the late afternoon, especially during the summer hot month. So here's a quick 3D view that shows the location of the public plaza in relation to the overall site. As you can see here, it is right adjacent to the existing open space that belongs to NJCU, the building to the east. And I also want to point it out that we're also creating a long Carbon Place, an eight-foot sidewalk widening per the redevelopment plan. The public plaza really has a green space at the center of its design. We're proposing a rain garden that is consists of native species. We're working very closely with the sustainability team from the city on that. And it will feature a larger open space to the back, and a lot of seating areas along the planted areas, and also being shaded by shade trees. Here's a view looking at the plaza from Carbon Place. Here's a second view. Let me try to make it full screen. Yeah, here's a second view, standing in the alleyway as you're approaching to the open space. You can see the building entrance in the background, nicely framed by the trees that we're proposing. Here is a snapshot of the larger open space. Again, there will be some terrace seating on lawns to one side, and then on the other three sides will be plants, plant... planters with seedings at the edge. A quick overview on the site plan here. Just a quick note that we're complying with both FAR density as well as building height. We're at 12-story with a 6.6 FAR. The current building proposed 547 units with 276 parking spaces. And you can see the 12-story building as shaded, sitting on top of a podium, a two-story podium that would be also landscape. And you can see on the lower right corner would be the public plaza. Want to quickly go through the plan. And so this is first floor plan. As you can see, the public plaza for orientation, the main building entrance is located right off from one of the access road... access walkways from the plaza. Coming in, I also want to point out that the plaza will be surrounded by the amenity spaces with windows overlooking the plaza. Really create a very welcoming space and safe space. On Carbon Place, we have roughly, I'd say, 950 square feet of commercial space in this case, potentially a cafe or something that can be connected to the lobby to further making the experiences on the plaza and on the sidewalk more pedestrian-friendly. Going west from that retail space, we are required to provide necessary mechanical spaces, including switchgear rooms, that will occupy really a good portion of Carbon Place. And further to the west would be the entrance to the parking garage. In this case, because there are 276 parking spaces, we consider it to be prudent to provide a secondary egress-only parking entrances as demonstrated to the further left of this plan. And therefore, there is a deviation calling for additional signage. In this case, it will be basically signage is calling for where the garage is. We think those are the ones that we're asking for, the two garage entrances.
So if I could just stop you right there. One of the deviations that we're requesting is for three signs where one is required. Two of those signs are gonna be for the entrance and exits of the parking garage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the other one is for the building signage that we saw in the previous slide, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Continue.
We are providing 276 parking spaces, including 195 regular standard parking spaces and 81 compact car spaces. Also wanted to point out... Excuse me. There will be a total of 42 electric charging station proposed. 14 will be provided in day one, and 28 will be provided in the future. And in addition to all of that, there will be two rental car spaces provided to reduce vehicle congestion. The second floor is a continuation of the parking space. There is a ramp right in the middle. To go up there, on top of that, there will be some additional parking that we're proposing. There will be no building above, so the parking in the kind of facing the backyard will be screened with an eight-foot tall fence around. Third floor, we are at the first residential level. As I mentioned before, there will be three landscaped roof decks over the parking, and will be surrounded by residential amenity spaces, including lounge, game room, club room, co-working spaces. Also, we're starting to look at really additional shared outdoor spaces for the residents. In total, there will be close to 14,000 square foot of outdoor amenity space proposed for the building. So here's a typical floor plan from fourth to 10th floor. It's color-coded per unit types. The purple, deep purple, and the light purple are the two bedrooms. The greens are the one-bedrooms, and the salmon and the pale yellow color are studios. There is a breakdown. I can quickly note if... there will be a 38% studio with the average size between 414 square feet to 557 square feet. 51% of one-bedroom, ranging from 575 square feet to 717 square feet. 11% of two-bedrooms, ranging from 770 square feet to 982 square feet. On the top of the building, there will be additional setbacks to create more terraces and reliefs for the building massing. Otherwise, I don't really need to go into too much detail. Still mixer of one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, and studios. On the top of the building, there will be a sky lounge being proposed that will be connected with two outdoor roof terraces, one facing south, the other part faces north. The rest of the roof will be designed as high reflectance EPDM roofing membrane.
And how about materiality?
We can quickly go to the material. Just want to quickly shows... showing the overall building as looking from Carbon Place, public plaza right in the front. The building will carry a very, I think, distinct character that is both contemporary but also relates to the contacts with, you know, warehouses, industrial buildings in the neighborhood. We can quickly take a look at some of the materials.
Can pass this around if you'd like.
Oh, absolutely. The majority of the building will feature a warm-toned metal panel, accented by a darker gray metal panel. The building will feature a cementitious base that looks... it's a combination of stone and man-made stone materials. And then the building would have additional setbacks and carve-outs on the very top to really give it a little bit more charact... residential character. The main facade facing Carbon Space... Carbon Place, we wanted to create some reliefs along the relatively long facade. Again, to take the cue from an industrial building, we want to treat it with a certain level of repetition. But again, it's broken up by deep recessed balconies and the terraces to introduce some additional scale and relief. Here's a quick detailed view of the building as you're looking up from the streets. Here, you can see the recessed window plus the balconies that we're proposing. Overall, the building is complying with the facade articulation requirement. In fact, in fact, we're by far exceeding that. There is a required 20% of facade variance. We're at 35.4%. And the facade material variation required is 10%. We're at 29%. There's a view of the building looking from the west, and the building would carry the same look with the same material all the way. This is a view from the back as if looking from the Fisk Street side. And we have... or you have looked at some of the materials that we have presented. So the majority of the facade that have a light-colored, warm-colored metal panel with large windows that will be in the dark gray color. And then the third material metal color we're introducing is the gold color, which is gonna be an accent color to highlight some of these pop-outs or the balconies that we proposed here. The base of the building would feature natural stone on the base, as well as some man-made stone that have a very pretty texture that would mimic stone that... but it's very, very much more durable. Here, you can see the retail signage being proposed. The retail would feature large storefronts, double-height glass articulation. The building entrance would feature a variety of lights with a canopy to really indicate the building entrance. And here's a view of the streets. Again, we're proposing both downlights and wall scancers to make sure that the street is well lit, that sidewalk will be well lit at night. And quickly going through, these are the three residential signages that we're proposing. The two on the top... Sorry, the one on the... the upper-left one is the one we're proposing for the parking garage. The other sign for the parking garage would be similar to the one that we're showing here. Some additional views for the... some of the outdoor amenities. This is the third floor featuring a pool. And then we also have the rooftop amenities. Again, here we have barbecue stations, outdoor seating areas. And with that, that concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions?
Anything, Council?
That would conclude our presentation.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Doc.
Yeah, how much affordable housing you have in this building?
There's none, zero, none is required since we are complying with the plan and no deviations adding additional building area. So we're compliant, and then there's no affordable housing proposed.
And one more thing I want to ask about the flooding. What actions have you taken for flooding if there is a lot of rain and everything?
Well, we gotta comply with the DEP in terms of, you know, whatever requirements they have in terms of flood-proofing and raising of, you know, the facade. But I don't believe we're in a flood area.
We're not in the flood area. We're relatively high. However, the site is designed with a rain garden, as we have shown, together with a stormwater detention tank that will be designed to the engineer's standard.
Hopefully, we don't have those D...
Hopefully.
... flooding issues.
Couple of questions, a couple of concerns. Start with the concern is the panels. They look a little reflective to me. They seem to have some kind of a...
Glare?
A shine, a glare to... if the sun hits right, could we go with matte panels, same color, but matte panels just so they don't reflect so much?
Absolutely.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay.
We want a condition on that.
Yeah, let's put a condition on that. Who says this? I don't even know. Kim. We'll put a condition for matte panels instead of reflective ones. Are there warning lights on the garage exits, the two exits?
We talked about that, and we will... we did bring that up in our... one of our prep calls, just in terms of some kind of a notification or safety notification
Yes.
for entrance and egress of the parking, because people are on their headphones all day and they don't pay attention.
I like to blame the cars, but...
Yeah, right.
Either way.
Right.
Either way.
But we will... we could work with staff on that, and we could...
Absolutely.
Put a warning light, or I know there's flashers, or no problem there, and we'll happy to agree to a condition on that, too.
Okay, excellent. The signage, are they backlit? Are they channel letters? What are they?
They're backlit.
Okay.
Yes. The details has been included in the site plan application package.
My last concern are the electric car spaces in the garage. Are they all grouped together, or are they spread out through the garage?
So here's a first-floor plan. The electric charging stations are indicated with the circle. The ones solids are the ones that will be installed day one, and the ones that are...
Future.
Yeah, the ones that are futures are indicated otherwise. So we do have them grouped in a few different locations, but they're all on the first floor. Some are along the western side of the parking garage on the first floor. Some are next to the ADA sta... spaces, which is closer to the entrance to the building.
So it's, I would say, grouped together but spread out within the first floor of the garage?
Okay. There... so there's a concern, it might happen down the road at some point, that fire code changes for EV charging spaces in garages. So, you know, I don't know if we should think ahead, but that's on the applicant, yeah.
I mean, I know e-batteries are...
Yeah.
... concerned.
And lastly, those handicap spaces that are also EV spaces, are they either-or? Do you have to have an electric vehicle to park in that space if you have the plaque?
The handicap spaces are provided per ADA requirement. I believe we have the handicap spaces proportioned to have them to be able to EV charge. As you can see here, some of these would have the EV chargers, but I'm trying to see, there are handicap spaces that are... that does not have EV charging station.
My concern is if those handicap spaces are taken, that another vehicle couldn't use that handicap spot if it wasn't an EV vehicle also? So if we can make sure that those are...
What we... yeah, I see your point, and those are, you know, that day one, we don't want to be impeding any ADA.
Of course.
So I have no issue, and I'm sure we can probably move those proposed over so that the ADA spaces are unobstructed. There's no issue that they may or may not be EV-ready.
I'd love if they were EV-ready.
Okay.
But I just don't want to condition that spot on being... But I just don't want to condition that spot on being an EV ADA spot solely, that it's combined.
Right.
So, you know.
And I think some of the handicap spaces or ADA spaces have to be EV-ready.
True, true.
So there are 14 provided in day one. Two of them, as you see on the screen, are for the ADA spaces. So Chairman, to your point, we can look at, maybe just keep one and try to keep the 13 of them to be.
Are they assigned? Are they assigned to unit numbers or are they first come, first served?
It'd be among, I would say on a more, I mean, listen, it's a little bit further down the road.
Sure.
First come, first served.
Okay.
I don't think there's going to be dedicated spaces for unit owners. I think it just gets way too crazy.
Okay.
In terms of implementing that.
No, I'd love if they were EV as well as ADA compliant. I just don't want to limit the use, that's all.
We can work on that, and I don't know if we have an answer right now how to.
It's fine.
Maybe it's signage, just to say.
So it's got to comply. You got to comply, obviously, with ADA requirements. You got to comply with the necessary EV, both in installing as well as in future use and ready-able. And then Chairman, to your point about potential code changes, I know a lot of the time it goes retroactive, it's down the road. But, you know, if you've, you've got to move these around, you should probably construct so that it's easy. You don't need the station. As I understand it, the wiring versus the station, the stations themselves are rare. The real big ticket goes if you start putting in all these charging stations versus wiring to be adaptable.
Okay, that was it for me. Anybody else?
Yes, I have a concern, a question, a concern too. So you're moving of the open space to the corner of the area of, on carbon. The balconies, you mentioned that the middle balconies are all recessed, but the railings of the balconies are not recessed. They seem to be flush with the edge of the balcony. So my concern is that the toe plate of that railing, we don't want it to become a bathtub holding water, but we do not want it to be an open space that somebody could kick something out. Now you have the corner balconies in that open space area, and all of them, and one of your renders, there's a man standing underneath it. When you look at your renders, so you have a person standing underneath the balcony, and if God forbid, something fell off of that balcony by kick, you know. So that's always been one of my concerns. I'm hoping that one day somebody could design something that allows the water to seep out, but nothing else. And if you could take that into consideration, I think it's just a safety aspect. God forbid, we don't want nobody getting hurt while they're having fun in an open space area. And I noticed that with your balconies in the middle, there is, they're recessed all the way back in, but the railing is all the way up to the front of the edge. So if there's something we, you guys could do to address that with the planning staff, I think it would be to the best interest of the developer and everybody that figures that area.
Fair question, Commissioner. We could look at that. We'll look at that, and we'll work with staff if there's a design or railing that, you know, they think may think is better or to eliminate any of the safety concerns. We'll look at.
It's a safety aspect, yes. There's usually four and a half inches, your toe plate.
Yeah.
A lot of things could go through four and a half inch opening.
We're a little bit less. I think the code is not more than four inches.
Yeah, four inches space above from the cement, yeah. Just something to look at, too. We already seen that in incidents happening before, so avoid that. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
My next witness is Dan Badgley, just brief landscape architecture testimony, just in terms of the species and plantings.
No deviations.
No deviations, no, this is just detailing what we're, all the green. Because we did work with forestry early on to make sure, you know, these are all good stuff. These are all good plantings that are going to survive.
Here in the city.
Correct.
Okay.
You swear on your testimony you get tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state your name?
Yes. Excuse me, my name is Daniel Badgley, spelled B-A-D-G-L-E-Y.
Good evening, sir. We've qualified you in the past. Is your license current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Dan, if you could, can you please briefly go through the landscaper, landscaping features of this project, please? And before you get, before you get into it, I'm going to ask if we could enter this as an exhibit A5. This is just a selection of slide, A6, excuse me, thank you, counsel. A6 is just a selection of slides from the architectural plans and from the landscaping plans that are already provided. It is a, what, four-slide deck dated.
Five.
Five-slide deck dated October 22 of '24. Go ahead, Dan.
That's great. Thank you. So just wanted to run you through the exterior environments for this project, including hardscape, landscape, and site lighting. To start on the west end and work our way through the streetscape, we have proposed 10 street trees within 14, I'm sorry, 10, 10 street trees within eight tree pits. Two of the tree pits are elongated to accommodate two trees, where the remainder of the tree pits are the standard five-foot by 10-foot. The tree species for the street trees are a columnar variety of sweet gum, which get to be about 50 or so feet tall in maturity and only stay about five to six feet or so wide in maturity as well, which is why we're confident we can propose them so close together in the combined tree pits. The tree pits will be filled out with a ground cover form of, sorry, fragrant sumac. And each tree pit will be surrounded by a Jersey City-approved tree guard, which are surrounded on three sides but open to the street. As we move east, you can see the design opens up to the plaza space that Mr. Zhu talked about earlier. This plaza space is 8,500 square feet. It is proposed to have a large rectangular pavement pattern pretty much throughout, except for the central area you see here, which I'll call an area rug of a smaller rectangular plank-style pavement pattern, so a slight pavement change there. We have 16 wall topper seat benches, which are along 358 linear feet of concrete seat wall, which surround all of the landscape areas and which include a double tier of seating which are set into the grade on the east. To get into the landscape detail a little bit, we have an existing 10-inch oak, which we are proposing will be protected and remain. You can see 10-inch diameter.
Okay, 10-inch diameter.
Yeah, I'm sorry, diameter at brass type, DBH, yes. Very large tree. And then you can see seven proposed shade trees, which are a seedless sweet gum. So they'll have very much the same type of fall color as the street trees, just in a, you know, more standard canopy habit, growing to, you know, around 50 or so feet high, but more a standard 25 to 30-foot diameter canopy. All of the islands, landscape islands you see in the plaza will receive, I'm sorry, the two larger landscape islands in the plaza will receive stormwater. So we've proposed appropriate plant material for that, which are, you know, appropriate for rain gardens and that type of situation. Excuse me. The, I would say the bulk of the landscape is an attractive mix of evergreens, deciduous, flowering plants. So, you know, we will have year-round interest. And just to give a summary, we, you know, again, we have the one existing large oak, a total of 17 shade trees, 107 shrubs, and 895 combined ornamental grasses, ground covers, and perennials. So that's it for landscape.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for the commissioners?
Thank you, I have no questions. Anybody else?
The existing large oak.
Yes.
You could point that out.
Yeah, it's right here. Can you see my mouse?
And that trunk is fully within the property?
The trunk is not within the property, but it's right on the property line. It's within an existing planting bed.
Whose tree is that?
Well, if it's not within our property line, then it would be the adjoining property owners. I don't have the answer to that question right now. Get the answer, but if it's not within our property line, then I guess it would have to be the next, the neighboring owner's NJCU. So it'd be their tree. Unless it's in, excuse me, unless it's in the right-of-way, then it'd be the city's tree. But I don't think, I think it's probably NJCU's tree.
That's not the right-of-way there?
Well, I see West Side Avenue up on the, on the screen there. No, because I think it's further to the right. If you follow the, kind of the shading, I think it's to the right of the crosswalk. And it's just the way the lighting looks from the, can't really tell though.
Do you write that right on the survey?
Sure, it's on the survey.
It's on the survey, yes.
But it's being kept. So, I mean, I could pull the survey out of my computer right now. I don't have it hard copied on me. But I could look.
It's within an existing planting bed. It's a raised planting bed that we are not touching.
Mia, are you had a question also?
Oh, yeah, I just, for the plants, just to get on record to confirm that you'll be complying with the city's native plant species ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, so they're required to have just, you know, this number of trees.
It is outside of our line. It is, I just took a look at the survey. It's outside of the property line. I think there's some miscommunication. We're not counting this towards our total number of trees. I think it's just, Dan pointed it out just to say there is an existing tree there of a 10-inch diameter within a planter. It's not ours, we're not touching it, and it will remain.
Well, you're not touching it, but if it's not yours, it may not remain.
But we would have no impact, control of that. And we're not taking the benefit of that tree as it relates to our site. It's just providing additional tree canopy for our site. I mean, we have the deviation for the number of street trees that we're proposing already. There's 14 that are required, 10 are proposed, right? That's along the streetscape and the frontage on carbon. There's additional trees that we're planting that don't go towards the frontage or the number of street trees required because we're putting in a plaza area. So that tree really has no significance to the project as a whole, except that it's immediately adjacent to the plaza area. It may provide cover, it will provide additional cover and canopy to our site. We can't control what happens with it, but our intention is to do everything we can to keep it as much as we can, although we acknowledge we can't, because it's not ours to keep.
Okay. All right, all right with that. Okay, anybody else, any questions?
One, one other question, because I did not confirm. So with the deviation going from 14 to 10 trees, you'll be paying into the tree fund for the four that will not be planted?
Absolutely, and that was part of our old approval, and we will continue to honor that.
I just want to get that on.
Yeah, no, 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 for sure, it's part of the, we ask, we got to pay. No, no.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Counsel, anything else?
Nothing for Dan, just finally, Charles would just confirm all the deviations.
Okay, excellent.
No, no, okay, okay.
All these paper-friendly professionals. Charles is just going to be referring two slides from A4, not a new exhibit. She's just plugging into.
So this is the flagging part of the presentation?
Correct. Who's timing?
I'm just going on what he said.
I do. Yes, Charles Heyd, last name spelled H-E-Y-D-T. Mr. Heyd, good evening. Your license is current tonight? It is. Okay, thank you, you're qualified. Thank you. I'll jump right to it. Good evening, board members. We are carrying from last meeting. I just did want to remind the board of one of the variances that was discussed at the last meeting to start off the application. This is with respect to the creation of a new right-of-way map. We are taking the conservative position that while it doesn't say required, it does reference creations of new rights-of-way. On this property, there are two frontages that are to be created. One is a widening along carbon, so we are still implementing that from the map. It's really the bisecting street that we are not providing. So that's the deviation request for that portion that bisects this property. You can see from this exhibit where in red on the left, it's proposed. And then we are shifting that to the southeast corner of the site in terms of the area and converting it from a right-of-way to, again, a public asset, which is the plaza. So that's the gist of the one request from creation of a new right-of-way. It is a bulk deviation, and we are obviously proposing an alternative design that keeps the same square footage from the right-of-way. That's approximately 8,500 square feet. And obviously, we just saw the concept designs for the plaza itself, with the landscaping, the trees, the shade trees, and the seating areas. So that will be a benefit to not only the proposal, the application, but it will be a semi-public-private area where members of the greater community can come to have a place to be. With respect to the other deviations that are being requested or variances, there are three that affect the streetscape and two that affect really the architecture. With respect to the streetscape, they're relatively straightforward. Just to remind the board, we heard from our civil engineer on the application that there's the maximum permitted loading space along the streetscape of 30 feet. What's being proposed is 75 feet. And that's been coordinated with the review agents on the city transportation planning department to give enough area for not only loading but pickup and drop-off, really just addressing the fact that providing the plaza will be more of an active location and providing a suitable area for on-street loading is preferred. So again, it's a 75-foot proposal where 30 feet in length is permitted. The other two we just heard about are the street trees, 10 proposed, 14 required. We'll reiterate. We'll reiterate that we are providing actual additional street trees on the subject property, so there's an increase of total of seven additional trees on the subject property, which is a benefit to the overall design. And lastly, which, last meeting, we heard about the details of the distance between street trees, the spacing. This is a requirement that the city has, that they range anywhere from twenty-two to thirty-five feet. What's being proposed are approximately twelve feet, and its greatest distance, again, we're dealing with loading zones, drop-off areas, fire hydrants, other street utilities. The greatest distance is fifty-one, approximately fifty-two feet. So we are outside of those spacing distances, but again, we have coordinated that with the city, and obviously are referencing the relief here. Those are the three deviations with respect to the streetscape, or variances. With respect to the architecture, the two that we had covered previously in testimony from the project architect are the unenclosed rear yard parking. That's prohibited in the plan, there's not parking permitted in the rear yard. This is parking above the first level of the structured parking that's integrated into the project. And the way we are able to mitigate that impact from the adjacent structure to the north is providing that screening. So we are providing a screening, which will help visually separate. It doesn't have a roof, so it's not part of the overall structured area of the building, but the vertical screening will help block any visuals from those vehicles there, and we did address that with the adjacent property owner that's directly impacted by that deviation. So that's the unenclosed structured parking in the rear. And the second is with the signage. We obviously heard, one is permitted for residential uses in the district, and we are proposing an additional two for the entrance and exits of the property, so, for the vehicular access. All in all, these are very relatively minor deviations to request, but we do have to address them. They also have to advance special reasons in the land use law, so I'll just reference the three that I think are appropriate. Purpose A, to guide appropriate development in the state of New Jersey. We did work with city agencies and have direct community meetings with several property owners, adjacent property owners within this area since the prior site plan approval, so it's been an active conversation, and obviously, any comments from this board, we've tried to address as well. Purpose E is an appropriate establishment of appropriate population densities. This redevelopment, this new application within the redevelopment plan does comply with all the maximum FAR standards and the permitted mixed-use development, so there's no exceedances there. Lastly, the creation of a desirable visual environment, that's purpose I. With respect to the architecture, I did, there was, oh, it's up, thank you very much. The architecture meets all the architecture and design standards of the redevelopment plan, and we think that the idea to transfer the right-of-way to the plaza is really a benefit to all. So that's being shown here on sheet seven. But that does, in my opinion, create a desirable visual environment. With respect to the negative criteria, my computer just froze. There's two prongs to the negative criteria with respect to any substantial impairment of the redevelopment plan. I don't think there's any impairment here. These are, as I mentioned before, relatively minor and routine variances and deviations that are being corrected. We've tried to mitigate the impact of the request with design alternatives shown to you. We are still advancing objectives of the redevelopment plan, really transitioning what was a recycling plant into a nice mixed-use residential mixed-use project. So one of the objectives to provide for the orderly phase conversion of vacant land and antiquated industrial land uses and buildings within the redevelopment area to a modern, integrated, mixed-use community. So it really holistically does advance the redevelopment plan. We are also in line with the master plan, so no substantial impairment there. We are ensuring the city's available housing is balanced and meets the needs of all current and future city residents. We are also improving open space assets and connecting them to each other and into the community. So this is advancing both of those objectives of the master plan. And lastly, with respect to any detriment to the general welfare, we've taken great care to request the relief needed. The mention about the safety enhancements for vehicular access is duly noted. We, along with the signage, but also any sort of pedestrian warning signals is part and parcel of that. We are providing additional street trees, which I do think is mitigating the lack of, I mean, onsite trees, which mitigates the lack of street trees. And lastly, the screening for the vehicles in the rear of the property. That's my testimony with positive and negative criteria, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hight. I have nothing, anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, that'll conclude our presentation, and thank you, the Thank You Board for your time.
Okay, thank you. At this time, let's open it up for public comment. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this? Come on up, guys.
Good, how are you? I do. Yeah, Brendan Devaney, D-E-V-A-N-E-Y. I'm from Taylor Law Group. You want my home address or law? Yeah, 430 Mountain Avenue, Suite 103, New Providence, New Jersey.
Counsel, are you testifying as a member of the public or an attorney right now?
I'm testifying on behalf of my client. Maybe I raised my hand the wrong time, I'm not sure.
No, that's fine, do you want to put your appearance on record then?
Yes, please. Oh, yeah, I've never done this before, sorry. Brendan Devaney from Taylor Law Group, here on behalf of University Academy Charter High School.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Oh, yeah, so our client just had one concern, they're the tenant on the west side of the property at 275 West Side Avenue. They're aware of the project and the scope of work and all of that, their only concern is regarding the security and safety of their students. They're worried that without any clear delineation between property lines, it'll be kind of difficult to keep students from going to the plaza, and members of the plaza from coming onto the student property. So they were just hoping that they could get some sort of fence, whether that be natural or, you know, a standard fence, just to kind of ease some of those security concerns.
In the plaza area, it looked like...
Fence and a nail wall on the rendering.
So we are proposing an eight-foot fence along that side to ensure, obviously, you know, students are not coming onto our side and vice versa.
So, counsel for the applicant, that goes to the facade of the building at the rear of that plaza? Why don't you put it back up on the screen? So. In the rendering, it looks like the wall is next to the facade of the building. Does it dead-end into the facade of the building?
This is our new wall that's within our property that we're constructing. What we're proposing is that the proposed landscapes, including the planter edge, would then have a railing, metal railing on top of that, and the top of the railing would be eight feet from the adjacent.
And that goes to the wall, correct? There's no space in between?
There's no spacing between the fencing and then our wall.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anything else?
My, yeah, so I want to make sure there's no gap between the building, that wall, and fence on top of it, so that students can't get, or anybody can't get in between and through.
There is no gap.
Thank you.
Yeah, that should satisfy our concern then.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Anybody else from public? Come on up.
Hi.
Good evening.
Also an attorney representing a neighboring property owner.
Sure, sure, you want to put your appearance on record then?
Patrick Conlin from Scarinci Hollenbeck, S-C-A-R-I-N-C-I Hollenbeck. So I represent the owner of 49 Fisk Street, not in any way opposing this application. I just wanted to ask Charles Hight and Cameron to just elaborate on the eligibility for the right-of-way bonus, considering that there is this deviation from the map that's shown. I just want to clarify that if that deviation is granted, that the applicant is still eligible for the bonus.
I could go first, but basically, I'm regurgitating what Charles already said, which is that they are meeting the right-of-way for Carbon, and then as an additional positive criteria, they're providing the park where the future right-of-way would have been, but cannot be provided anymore, because it would be a road to a wall. So that meets the objectives of the redevelopment plan and satisfies the bonus.
And so the fact that it's just a small portion, you know, that it is different, as long as you provide some amount of the right-of-way, if there are special reasons to provide this deviation, that it's still eligible for the bonus even with the deviation?
They are providing a right-of-way on Carbon Place.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Okay, anybody else from public?
Gino Ferruli, address is 33 Anita Drive.
Good evening, sir, we have three minutes for you. Unless, are you an attorney also?
No.
Okay, I love it, three minutes.
Just a joining neighbor. I own the daycare center on Fisk Street, which is adjoining to the property where they're building this thing here. And I just wanted to know, what is the setback for my property, from the back of the daycare center, to where the building's gonna go?
Counsel, do you want to address? And I'll pause your, I'll pause your time, sir.
I'm sorry?
I'll pause your time, and we'll just have counsel address.
How you doing?
Good. So Gee's gonna testify as to that. And the rear of the property, it's at the ground level zero, above the ground floor, it's a thirty-foot setback. It's a thirty-foot setback. I don't know where your building is in relation to our building.
Well, this is the property right here.
We're on Carbon, right, there's a building behind us on Fisk.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. That is the building.
Forty-nine Fisk?
No, 33.
Okay.
Yes. Thirty-three Fisk, it's a daycare center.
I believe it's one of the properties on the eastern part of our site. What we're proposing is, as Gerard has mentioned, we're entitled to go up to the lot line on the first floor. From the second floor, the building is set back thirty feet, and going up thirty feet from the lot line.
But my building is at the end of my property, so how could you go up against it?
There is no residential use, and again, the rear yard setback, it's all prescribed in the redevelopment plan that we're complying with. There's no residential unit or any things in that nature that require natural light and air, and the units that's above that is set back thirty feet from the lot line.
I'm not understanding that.
He's on, you, you're, go ahead.
I'll make it simple for you. This is the daycare center, this is your property. How far are you gonna be to my building on this?
Well, your building is on your lot line.
I'm on Fisk.
Our ground floor is zero feet at the ground level on that side, and then above the ground floor, it goes, sets back thirty feet. That's the answer.
I still don't understand that. Thirty feet?
Zero at the ground.
Where at grade, correct.
Buildings are next to each other. Starting on the second floor, their building goes back thirty feet. So your building is going to be next to that wall in the drawer. Can you see the wall in the drawer? Yeah. So this abuts your building up here, is set back thirty feet to the tower, residential tower.
So there will be a wall.
Correct.
There'll be a wall, which will be on property line, that's correct?
Correct, that's right.
Okay, and how tall is that wall that you're gonna build?
It will be, because the grade varies, about thirteen foot six, that'll be the first floor, and then on top of that, we would have a parapet, about three foot six of a parapet, just for protection, and on top of that, we're proposing a screen that would screen some parking that will be on the back.
All right, I don't oppose anything, I just wanted to know, you know, where the lines are gonna be there. Okay, good luck.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please, come on up.
Mr. Chair, seeing no more public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed.
Yes, so, planning staff is satisfied with the professional planning testimony given by the planner, Charles, in regards to the variance and the positive and negative criteria, and how the project meets the objectives and goals of the redevelopment plan, and how it does not negatively impact our master plan. And planning staff agrees. Yeah, the project is meeting the vision of the redevelopment plan, which specifically contemplates sustainable design and, you know, incorporating rain gardens and native species like this. It's a more efficient layout than the prior approval. And, yeah, we are going to add into the planning memo dated November 20th, an eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh condition, an eighth condition for the mat panels, ninth for garage safety exit, tenth to move one of the EV out of those ADA spaces that were right up front, and then the eleventh is to address the balcony designs.
Ken, I don't know if we need a condition for that.
Okay.
Just work with.
It's just, you know, work with staff to make sure that those ADA spaces are designed for what they're supposed to be, that's all.
Okay. Well, we'll keep the eighth for the mat panels and the ninth for the garage design.
All those conditions are acceptable, including the ones in the prior, the additional conditions, and we'll work with staff on the ADA space.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, then, planning staff recommends approval and meets the objective and goals of redevelopment plan, and we see it as a great asset to the neighborhood, so planning staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Ken.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P-2024-0036 as presented to the board tonight with the conditions outlined.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval with conditions.
All right, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I like the program, I mean, the project, I really do. Think it meets the objectives of the redevelopment plan, thanks for working with us, it's gonna be a great asset to the community, I vote aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Yeah, it's a great addition to the neighborhood, very familiar with the neighborhood as well. Love the green space, the outdoor, that the community will have accessibility to it as well. Based on the variances, I think there is no detriment to the redevelopment plans, I vote aye.
Counsel one, Prinzeri?
Yeah, so it's nice to see what, I hope, will be the final iteration of this project, there have been multiple going back almost seven years now, I think, if memory serves. But thank you all for taking community concerns as it relates to community space and open space, as you've gone through multiple iterations, and I wish you best of luck, I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Yeah, thanks for taking time out and showing that community space too, I'd like to speak on that, but as you move forward for the public that came out, an enlightenment today was that there's a daycare center right on the... as you move forward for the public that came out, an enlightenment today was that there's a daycare center right on the property line or the property line that you have built it. So let's have some concern for that, you know, we have students on one side that I didn't notice while I was looking in the prints, and I have a daycare center in the back that I didn't notice while I was looking through this. So I'm glad that they kept, the public came out. Let's keep that in mind and concern while the construction and safeguard for those properties that are your neighbors' looks. And with that, I'll vote aye.
Commissioner Tomato?
I concur with my board members and I vote yes.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Yeah, only thing I like is so many parkings, which is so good for the people who live there. And one thing I didn't like is no affordable housing for people, but I'm going to vote aye.
And Chairman Langston?
So, yeah, I agree with Mr. Height's testimony, Cameron's wrap-up. There's no detriment to the zone plan. It it's a good project. I like the the public open space being used as opposed to a a through street. I'd always rather see pedestrian, you know, access to something than than a street. Just to jump off on what Commissioner Commissioner Torres said, you know, I hope the applicant, knowing that there's a daycare behind that butts up to the property line. It's out of this board's jurisdiction, but I do hope that they use qualified trains and safe workers to construct the building and counsel, I'm sure we could point you in the right direction to help out with that anytime you need, but my vote is going to be aye.
Motion carries. All in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, commissioners. Thank you very much, and thank you for your thoughts. We'll definitely take that into consideration.
Great.
Appreciate it.
All right, let's move on to the second item tonight. Item B, case P two zero two four dash zero two one six is three one-year extensions for five Second Street, also known as two forty-two Hudson Street.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Charles Harrington of Connell Foley on behalf of the applicant. So tonight, we're asking for three one-year extensions. It's it's a little bit different from what's usually put before the board because we've already asked for a one-year extension a few years ago, so you're you're entitled to ask for up to three one-year extensions under the M L U L. But there's also another provision that if you have a project that's over a hundred, a hundred units, if there's economic, you can consider the economic conditions and the complexity or comprehensiveness of the development. It allows the board to grant additional time. So we are asking for that additional year as part of this application. And I I'll tell you the background of it in in support of that request. This is is for the project called Plaza Eight. This is the the project that's on on the waterfront that in is in proximity and part of that beer garden. I was before the board a few months ago, probably more than a few months ago for Plaza Nine, which is the the second, the second phase. So Plaza Eight, when we got our first extension, it took us to March tenth, twenty twenty-three, right, for the extension of the approvals. And prior to that extension date, the the project had permits for a T W A permit, a F A, a F F A permit for the flights over over the the building. And we also had a soil erosion permit. So we had permits prior to that that March tenth, twenty twenty-three date. And I had a discussion with the planning director and and she said, well, you you vested your approval. Do you want a zoning determination letter? And quite honestly, my client and and there's a purchaser of the project wanted to come to this board kind of with belts and suspenders to make sure we're okay. Because we also, at the time, we applied for a building permit prior to that March twenty twenty-three date. And we were granted the building permit in October of twenty twenty-three. So we're very far along, but it's it's really, you know, the concern, quite honestly, is is when we, as Mr. Lampy could could confirm, is when we get to the discussions with lenders down the road. We we want to make sure that that everybody is 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 square with this. So that's why we're asking for the three years, because the two years will take us to March of twenty twenty-five. So there's going to be an appeal period to to any extension granted. And then probably the closing date with appeal period is probably going to come right around then, so we're looking for some wiggle room to to make sure we we have time to to do that. So so that's what we're asking for tonight. I do have a client rep here tonight in the event you have any questions, but that's that's the long and short of it.
Okay, counsel, so that I'm clear, go back to March of twenty twenty-three. And then run it through March of twenty twenty-six?
That's correct. March tenth, twenty twenty-six.
So Chairman and Board, obviously, we've dealt with extensions before. Counsel is correct specifically with respect to this board having discretion on large-scale projects under section fifty-two E of the M L U L. It's N J S A forty fifty-five D dash fifty-two E that allows, so C allows you to go backwards in time. And section E is for projects, there's a commercial component of like a hundred fifty thousand square feet, residential of a hundred units or more. And one of the things you get to consider is the economic challenge and the general conditions. Counsel is talking about the fact that they have to go and get a permit with respect to airplanes and a flight path. That process is a daunting task, as you can imagine. So all of that long-windedness being said, I think it's a appropriate request from the applicant. I have no issue legally. It's in the board's discretion, but I think counsel has given you the justification and the reason for the running it through twenty twenty-six. He probably doesn't need the extension. He doesn't need somebody in a windowless room on the financing end saying, well, we don't think this is good, so we're going to hold up hundreds of millions of dollars in financing to get the project done. That's, as an attorney, your worst nightmare comes true.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Anybody? Any questions?
No.
Okay, is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Seeing no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt?
Staff has no, staff has no comment, but if you have any questions, we are here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P two zero two four dash zero two one six as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Counselwoman Prinzari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Tomato?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to item C. It's case P two zero two four dash zero one seven four. It's a one-year extension to a preliminary and final major site plan with deviations for two fifty Academy Street.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Speaking of nightmares coming through, coming true, my name is Gerard Pizzillo. I'm an attorney of Genova Burns. Appearing this evening on behalf of the applicant, Go Pal G L L C, D V S R, D L L C. Owners of the properties, two forty-eight, two fifty Academy Street, blocks one, two, two oh four, block one, two, two oh four, lots one and thirty. Here this evening, requesting our third and final one-year extension of the site plan approval, preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviations that was granted under P nineteen one sixty-seven, extended by case number P twenty-two oh nine six, and then further case P twenty-three zero zero four five. We did file this request in September, shortly after the expiration date of August. We are extend, requesting for the extension to run through August of twenty-five. This is the third and final basis for the extension. There's just been a myriad of issues and problems with this case from day one. Demolition issues, neighbor issues, contractor issues, partner issues. My client's dream is to build a hotel here. He's a longtime Jersey City resident, and this is just what he wants to do. This is his goal. We are asking for this additional period of time to see if you can finally get this off the ground. I understand and he understands what's at stake here, that the protection of the approval is no longer, if should the board deny this application, or even if we do grant it and he's not able to move forward, he's unprotected and not, you know, liable to any zoning changes. But we are asking for this additional period of time to see if you can finally bring this project to fruition. We understand any conditions that are part of the prior approvals continue to remain in place, and we would accept that. And happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have on this. But that would conclude my remarks.
All right, thank you, counsel. It's never an attorney's problem, though. It's always the neighborhood problem.
No, it's always the attorney's problem. That's always the attorney's problem.
That's what I hear. I I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
No.
All right, thank you. Is anybody here from public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Motion to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, anything you want to add?
Staff has no comment. Staff advises approving the the extension.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two four dash zero one seven four as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Commissioner, Commissioner, ah, excuse me, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Tomato?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Prinzari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a great Christmas.
Thank you, too.
Have a nice holiday.
Mike, do you want to get a break in? Now, the next one might be half hour. Okay. Okay, we're going to take a ten-minute break, everybody. It's seven oh three. We'll be back at seven thirteen. Hear again, please, everybody?
Yeah, I got it now.
And let's call item D. It's case P two zero two four dash zero zero four two. This is for conditional use at four fifteen Monmouth Street. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Duncan Delano of Tarder, Krensky and Drogon. I'm here on behalf of applicant Warrior Weed LLC for case number P two zero two four dash zero zero four two. We are seeking a conditional use application and approval, conditional use approval for a cannabis dispensary at four fifteen Monmouth Street. If you'll recall, we were carried without notice from the November twelfth hearing. And so we redid notice. We got a new two-hundred-foot list which included the unit owners of the condo association, as well as the condo association itself. All notices were timely and properly delivered. Notice, proof of, affidavit of publication was also uploaded timely and has also been delivered today. And so I will, because it was carried without testimony, I will bring back up the architect, Will Weckenman, to provide testimony about the minor interior renovation.
Great, thank you, counsel.
Chairman, we do have the new notice. We're going to mark it for purposes of the record. My notes indicate, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we had marked the previous notice and found a problem with it. We had marked it as A one for purposes of the record, so I'm going to mark the new notice with the transmittal date of December second as A two for purposes of the record.
Counsel, the last hearing, exhibit A two was the condo deed and and bylaws?
So we'll mark it as
Perhaps A three?
A three. And for purposes of the record, out of an abundance of caution, because those addresses did not identify on the list, the applicant did go ahead and include those addresses in the list and renotice, so that was the purpose of that, and I think as a precautionary measure, we should start anew with the testimony.
Yes, that's right. With one minor correction, which is that we actually just got a new two-hundred-foot list, and lo and behold, the activism paid off. All the unit owners appeared on that list. The condo association also appeared on that list.
Excellent.
Yes, I do. Sure, it's William Weckenman. Last name spelled W E C K E N M A N N.
Mr. Weckenman, good evening. We've qualified you countless times now. Your license is current tonight?
It is, thank you.
Thank you, you're qualified.
I will be brief with my testimony. This is about as simple as a project from an architectural perspective as we present to this board. Project is an interior fit-out only of an existing commercial space. We have the existing and proposed floor plans here, side by side for comparison purposes. Again, this is an interior renovation. The total square footage of the commercial space is approximately three hundred and five square feet. It is an existing dog groomer. And we are planning a fit-out for a new dispensary. The entrance to the space and the storefront storefront will remain the same. When you enter the space, we have a check-in and security counter immediately adjacent to the door. The public area of the dispensary is located towards the front of the space. And it is bisected by the counter, the P O S counter here with the merchandise display directly behind it. The back-of-house space, we have the existing utilities, as well as secure storage and a employee-only restroom. The space is very small, so only one one means of egress is required per code. It's a very shallow space. It's approximately forty, forty feet, forty feet deep. So again, this 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 space meets the building code requirements for for egress. The exterior improvements are very minimal and involve signage, a window signage, which will be applied to the the existing storefront glass, as well as an opaque privacy and security film, which will be applied to, applied to the to the glass as well. That concludes my testimony, though I do have a security plan, as well as an odor mitigation plan available if there are any questions.
Actually, yeah, I was going to ask you about the odor mitigation. As far as security goes, I don't want locations of the cameras. I just want to know that they exist.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so if we could, let's go through odor mitigation.
Sure. The space, all of the exhaust vents for the space will be equipped with charcoal filters. There'll also be air purifiers within the space to help, again, with odor mitigation. The product is prepackaged, sealed. This isn't loose cannabis, so the anticipated odors from the from the merchandise is expected to be extremely low.
Okay, and where is the, where does the air vent to?
Currently, it vents through the roof, I believe, and that's just for the bath exhaust.
Okay. Understood. So the the charcoal filter units are just contained to the the retail space itself?
That's correct.
Okay.
But we will apply one to the bath exhaust as well, just out of an abundance of caution.
Okay. And the windows are screened, correct?
Yes.
Francisco, this might be a question for you. So the the business name is Warrior Weed. Is that, is weed allowed in the statute to be part of the name?
So that is a a condition I added. Basically, it just says, the applicant shall revise the logo and work with staff to come up with a new logo for the location if the signage is denied by the state. So ultimately, the state would have to review the signage and approve of it. So if there are any issues with the logo, the state will notify the applicant, and the applicant would have to work with staff to change it.
Okay, what about the actual city ordinance? Okay, what about the actual city ordinance?
The city ordinance doesn't speak to anything like that.
Okay, understood. That was, that's it for me. Anybody else? Questions?
Question, I guess, for Francisco, too. And the size of the space, the city ordinance doesn't have anything to say of that either?
No.
Of just a small entrance door coming in and out of the space?
Per the ordinance, I don't believe there's a limitation on the size of the square footage for this location, but other than that, no, there's...
Minimum or max?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Any questions?
I have a question. You had brought up about the, the word weed. Could we, you know, request that to be changed?
So that's outside the jurisdiction of the board?
Yes.
The state, as I understand it, regulates the naming, and if the state rejects it, as Francisco had indicated, then the applicant would have to trade under a different name.
Counsel, do you have any?
As far as I know, and I have looked at this previously, but it's been a while, Warrior Weed is a permissible name under New York, or New Jersey cannabis regulations and Jersey City regulate ordinances, which do not speak to that matter. And while there are sign restrictions, any, any sign that the applicant would use would be in compliance, you know, if, if it were deemed to be a condition of approval, that we need to, you know, cha, I don't know about changing the name. It's, the, the basis for the name is the applicant's, the, the principal of the applicant's brothers has served in the military, and one of the, one of the causes that the cannabis dispensary will support will be veterans' causes, and so Warrior Weed has some significance and was selected with that in mind. But, you know, we're also realistic and flexible, and if, if there are conditions made, we would, you know, I'd talk to my client, but we would consider them, and, and if that were a condition of approval, we would seriously consider that.
So unless that was part of the city ordinance, you know, we could have that conversation, but since it's not in our ordinance, no, it's, it's not the jurisdiction of this board, then?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Pat, anything else?
No, no more, no further questions.
Okay. Everybody good? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, anything else?
I just would like to take the opportunity to correct the record from last meeting. I made a comment that we, we organized a Zoom meeting for the residents of the condo association, and I, I rec, I, I mis- recollected that that was on October 30th. It was actually on September 24th, because we were originally supposed to appear before the board on the 24th of September. We got word that residents in the building had reached out to the planning board, concerned that they had not received notice, so we spoke with our planner and, and requested to be tabled and immediately scheduled that, that call for that evening with the condo association members. Only two residents joined the call, and only one really spoke, but just wanted to correct the record that that was September 24th.
Okay.
And I do have, if, if the board will accept, I have to enter into evidence emails to the, the condo association, reaching out, asking for input or, or concerns on, on the September 24th, November 18th, November 21st, and finally, again, on December 2nd.
So counsel, we'll take the representation that you, on behalf of your client, had reached out to the other unit owners, I believe when we were here, back at the prior hearing. We had recommended that everybody speak, because those unit owners were here. They were objecting to the application. I am sure they are in the audience tonight, and we're going to hear from them shortly, so I don't know if those conversations took place, but I am sure they are here and are going to come forward when we get to the public portion, which is going to be momentarily, so.
Yeah, they, they did not respond to any of those emails. We requested the letters they had provided to the board. They did not provide those. We asked for concerns, so we could talk about them. We offered to discuss payment of the, any increases in insurance, but they didn't respond to any of those emails.
Thank you, counsel.
But that's all the testimony we have.
You know, I want to be very clear for everybody, yourself, as well as those members in, in the public that are going to want to speak on the application, and, and for the board's edification with respect to this board's role on this application, we do not get into and/or have any jurisdiction over any dispute between unit owners and their rights amongst each other. Those are private disputes that are for another forum. With respect to our job as the planning board, obviously, we've heard a lot of these applications. This is a conditional use variance that's permitted under the zoning ordinance if you meet the conditions. We've gone through these conditions of the ordinance for this type of use. I believe we are up to somewhere in the neighborhood of almost 50 of these that have come before the board, so the board is very well-versed in what those conditions are and how this body has been interpreting those regulations. So with that, I just want to make sure everybody understands what this body's role is in the process, and obviously, this is not the last stop on the path with respect to cannabis licensing in the city. This is just whether or not what's being proposed complies with the zoning ordinance as written, so that's what our charge is and will be guided accordingly.
Thank you, counsel. Anything else, counsel?
No, that's it.
Okay, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to speak, come on up.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is William Murdock. M U R D O C K, and my address is 415 Monmouth Street, apartment 3.
Good evening, sir. We have three minutes for you.
Okay, members of the planning board, thank you for your time today. As a, an owner of a residential unit in 415 Monmouth Street, I'd like to voice my concerns about Warrior Weed in the manner which Ms. Moran has approached the approval processes. Other owners of residential units at 415 Monmouth Street in attendance today will express their detailed concerns about how specific aspects of Warrior Weed's application conflict with the criteria this board uses to evaluate these applications, and how these issues are undoubtedly against the spirit of what these criteria are seeking to protect, i.e. making sure these dispensaries are a safe distance from our community's youth, preventing oversaturation, maximizing safety, and ensuring community impact and inclusiveness. I have reviewed the testimonies of the other unit owners, and I echo their concerns. Instead of discussing these issues, however, I'd like to use the remainder of my time to discuss Ms. Moran and her counsel's lack of neighborly behavior throughout this process. Ms. Moran's counsel has stated the correct time for us to voice our concerns was at the cannabis board hearing, which concluded in February 2024. Unfortunately, the first time we communicated with Ms. Moran about the project, which was a communication we initiated over text, was on August 10th, 2024. How could we attend the CCB meeting if we were not aware of it? Not informing us, the owners of the units that would be most directly impacted, was not very neighborly. Ms. Moran and her counsel did not correct the fact that the other owners of 415 Monmouth were not included on the outreach list for this planning board meeting without us prompting them. The neighborly thing to do would have been to catch and correct the error themselves instead of relying on the fact that deferring to the list was all they were legally required to do. Just doing the legal minimum, minimum is a trend in Ms. Moran's application process. On the only conference call we set up with Ms. Moran and her counsel on September 24th, 2024, some of the HOA's questions around notification and the process, which were vetted by all four residential units in advance of being asked, were met with answers such as, "We were not legally required to notify you." The tone of the call was that the plans were already approved, and there was no room for changes. Ms. Moran barely spoke when prompted and allowed her counsel to do the, do most of the speaking. The HOA did not interpret the call as one of collaboration, but one of reactionary defensive posturing. On November 18th, 2024, Ms. Moran's counsel sent an email to our HOA. Members of the HOA found the email threatening and intimidating, and we, as a group, elected not to engage with such an email, which is why we have not responded to the counsel since the last meeting. Our experience with Ms. Moran throughout this application process does not paint a picture of a business owner who will be a role model for the community. We question the positive community impact this business can have when Ms. Moran has been reluctant to transparently and collegially communicate with her nearest neighbors. All four resident, residential units of the building are here today. All four units are opposed to this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I urge you to read the second half of the email that he submitted from November 18th. It's one of the most unprofessional emails I've seen.
All right, thank you, sir. Is anybody else here from public that wants to comment?
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Micah Chiles, C H I L E S. Micah is M I C A H. Live at 415 Monmouth Street, unit 4.
Good evening, sir. We have three minutes for you.
Thanks, Mr. John. So, members of the planning board, thank you for your time today. As an owner of residential unit 4 in 415 Monmouth, the building that Warrior Weed would reside in if approved, I'd like to voice my concerns about Warrior Weed and focus on my comments on that a micro-business subject to Class V cannabis retailer should be at least 200 feet away from a school identified on the city's official drug-free school and park zones map pursuant to section 151-1 in the Jersey City Municipal Code and pursuant to regulations and definitions of NGSA 2C colon 35-7. After consulting the Cannabis FAQ and Standards Document, I reached out to the Division of Engineering, and Lindsay Schofield, Senior Transportation Planner, Department of Infrastructure Division and Transportation Planning, provided two maps on 12-9, 2024. On both of these maps, Riverside Early Learning Center, block 111, 06, Lot 1, 317 Third Street, is identified as within the school buffer or drug-free school zone. Warrior Weed should also be aware of this, as Riverside Early Learning Center is on the 200-feet notification list included in the prior planning board documents. As a parent of a young child, I'm appreciative of the thoughtful guidance that went into drafting these boundaries, and while I may think 200 feet isn't large enough of a distance, I'm sure there was a thoughtful discussion that took place to determine that distance. Additionally, while I do not and would not oppose any legally-run business, I do expect them to follow city ordinances, and in this case, I expect there's other locations that do not fall within 20, 200 feet of the maps provided by the Division of Engineering of the city. So thank you. As one of the residential owners of 415 Monmouth, we stand unanimously opposed to the approval of Warrior Weed as it falls within the drug-free school zone maps the Jersey City provides me yesterday, and it violates our HOA bylaws. I yield the rest of my time. I'm happy to share copies of the email from the City Department of Engineering, as well as the mat, the two maps that notify as well.
So we'll, rather than enter something else into evidence, because we'd have to have it prior to the meeting, counsel, can we address that? So you're...
Riverside Early Learning Center?
Yes, so our, and, and Francisco, this is, feel free to jump in as well.
So in my staff report, which is on the, not the data portal, but the portal, Tyler Portal, you can clearly see that the location that they're discussing is a daycare center, which does not qualify as a school in their ordinance.
So that's...
No, I understand, but as I read the FAQs, right, it points to a specific map and how to get access to those, and what I'm sharing is, yesterday, from the Division of Engineering from Jersey City, they provided two maps, which both identify it within the, as a drug-free zone.
Francisco, is that consistent?
So there's multiple maps. Let me jump in here, okay?
That is correct, too.
There are multiple maps. So, Francisco, the map that the ordinance refers to... That's the map that you looked at, doing your analysis, correct?
That's correct, and that's also the map that the board has looked at previously for another application up the block that was approved, and it's across the street from the daycare center.
I just personally find it a little concerning that you follow the process, you ask the Division of Engineering, and you get a different map, right?
Of course, of course, I understand, but Francisco, just, I, I want to air it out in the public that daycare centers under the ordinance are not considered as schools, correct?
That's correct.
As odd as that sounds, I know.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not saying anything different than that. I'm simply saying, following the process of which maps should be referred to as, like, what the standard is, they're both identified, but not identified as a daycare center. So on the maps that should be used, or at least provided to me yesterday, it's identified as a school, and one has a 500-foot radius, the other has a 200-foot radius. So there's no inconsistency, at least on the information that the city provided me.
Sure, understood. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else from public? Please, come on up.
I want to see the map. I think I might be fucking right.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Diana Eng, 415 Monmouth Street, unit 1.
Good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Board members, thank you for your time. I'm an owner and resident of unit 1 at 415 Monmouth Street. I share the ground floor with the commercial space and often get doorbell rings from their customers who frequently confuse a residential entrance for the commercial entrance, even though there's a sign outside the store. This is an issue that the applicant needs to address. No one wants doorbell ringing at 7:00 AM or 11:00 PM, I'm sure. But more importantly, I'm here to voice concerns regarding the city's requirement that any cannabis establishment subject to a Class V license be separated from one another by at least 600 feet. As you know, there is an 1,800-square-foot cannabis store planned for 270 Newark Ave that has full municipal approval, and that is only 250 feet away from 415 Monmouth. 270 Newark has not pulled permits yet, but they've been actively working toward that. At the November 12 planning meeting, council for 270 Newark testified that their plans for a single-use building with a cannabis store on the ground floor and offices above are, quote, "no longer in play," so they're seeking an extension on their original approval for a mixed-use building with a store on the ground floor and condos above. They declared under oath that the only reason why 270 Newark has not pulled permits yet is because their original approval for the mixed-use building expired while they changed course to the single-use building plan, and now they're going back to the mixed-use plan. I've been in active dialogue with Raj Mudar, who provides management services to 270 Newark. Mr. Mudar confirmed that they've been delayed in pulling permits because of the back-and-forth between the mixed-use and single-use plans, but currently expect to submit permits in January of 2025, with construction completed by the end of 2025. I understand that the planning board's general interpretation of the 600-feet separation rule is that there isn't a pin on the map until the applicant has submitted for or pulled permits. However, the spirit of the 600-feet rule is to protect the community from an oversaturation of cannabis businesses within a short distance, and approving yet another cannabis dispensary down the block from 200, 270 Newark, which has been fully approved by all three municipal agencies, has been communicating with the city as of November 12, and is expecting to submit for permits next month, goes against that spirit and goes against common sense. I, along with all residential owners of 415 Monmouth, urge the planning board to reject the application of Warrior Weed in light of all this and because it violates our building's bylaws. Thank you.
All right, anybody else from public? Please, come on up. And Francisco, can we confirm, as of today, no, that other applicant hasn't pulled permits, correct?
That is correct. I also was trying to pull up the transcript from the last meeting, where the, the council for the applicant for 270 Newark, where he had mentioned that the cannabis operators no longer intended to use the property as they were for the approval, just to clarify that, but that is correct.
They could have pulled permits between that meeting and this meeting, so that's, that's just where I'm going with it. They didn't pull permits as of this hour?
That's correct, and also, time of application does stand for this one.
Okay.
So regardless of they were to pull permits, this application is before the board. It only works if the application, the prior application pulled permits, and then this application would have applied to city planning. That's when it would have been the issue.
Correct. It's when the application is filed, not when it gets to the board meeting.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. Good evening, sir. Let's just get you sworn in.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes. And the record, your state's name, and give us your home address?
Yep, David Trabka, T R A B K A. My mailing address is 140 Bay Street, apartment 70, not 70, 70, and I am the owner of unit 2 at 415 Monmouth Street.
And we have three minutes for you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks again for your time. My name's Dave Trabka. Again, I'm the owner of unit 2. Our building's made up of four residential units and one commercial unit. It is a small building. It is a small, tight community. This project would be in violation of the bylaws governing our building, and the reality is that neither the HOA... is that neither the HOA nor the homeowners were informed or included at any earlier phase of this process. We've been told these points were best made prior to the cannabis board, but you've already heard tonight, we weren't provided the opportunity to do so. So, you know, we've been left in the dark since the initiation of this project. But I'd like to reiterate for the record, this project is in violation of Article Five, Section eight H and eight G of our bylaws. That remains the case today. We've previously discussed the increased risk of an all-cash business and introducing security that's likely armed to our property. If you look at the map, the cannabis space you enter through this door on the white, directly to the left, that skinny gray strip is the entry to our front hallway. To the right of the entry to the store is my fire escape and my pull-down ladder to get out of there. In my opinion, that affects the egress both to the whole building and Unit Two. And again, I recognize that bylaws aren't the purview of this board, but community is, outreach is, collaboration is. The appropriate time to collaborate with us was proactively twelve months ago, not reactively two months back, after we found out about it by, from a neighbor. We were never contacted directly by the owner nor from her council. And council mentioned he did reach out. I'd like to read a few excerpts from that recent outreach. These are direct quotes. "I don't know if you could tell, but the board was not interested in addressing most of your concerns and was only interested in making sure you received notice as required by law. I would caution you that an escalating legal strategy goes both ways. It is unlawful in New Jersey to tortuously interfere with another's business, so I would think twice before pursuing a further course of action without legal justification. You are hereby invited to meet us halfway. I guess I'll see you at the hearing. This time, however, I'll be better prepared and no longer feeling collaborative." That doesn't sound like somebody who's looking to collaborate, and certainly not somebody who cares about our small community in this building. I'm not against cannabis. I've shopped at stores like this one proposed, but none of this was handled the right way. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Anybody else from public?
Sure. Swati Rao, four fifteen Monmouth Street. S-W-A-T-I-R-A-O.
Good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Swati Rao, and I'm a resident and owner of four fifteen Monmouth Street, Unit Three. I urge the planning board to reject this application and will focus my comments on the timeline of this application and point five of the Cannabis Business and Consumption Areas FAQ document dated March seventh, twenty twenty-four. This application is in clear violation of several items listed on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine of this document. This application was heard by the CCB on October sixteen, twenty twenty-three, and then approved on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, with only one minute of public comment, i.e., no one from the building was there, no one from the neighborhood was notified, and there was no community engagement. We have further checked with our neighborhood association and other similar organizations on any outreach they may have done prior to the planning board notifications and can confirm, based on the feedback we have received from the city council, that the outreach was minimal to none. The council here has confirmed under oath that they had not engaged with anyone in the building throughout the CCB process, and yet the community impact statement submitted for consideration is meant to showcase the positive impact this application will have on the community. They waited to inform the residents and the owners of the building until they thought we would have no impact. An email sent to us by the council in November eighteen, twenty twenty-four had a threatening tone and several inaccuracies and misrepresentations. The email references, quote, "we postponed the hearing," which was not the case. It was the independent planning board decision on scheduling. The community impact and social responsibility statement required by the planning board application process for Warrior Weed is a three-page statement with general comments like commitment to local community and statements such as Warrior Weed will be leading initiatives around community engagement. None of this was done. It is clear from the behavior demonstrated on record historically by this applicant that they have chosen to selectively use the community impact arguments while ignoring several critical members of the community. Point five A from Class Five retail dispensary licenses asks for, quote, "description of outreach activities," of which there have been none for over a year when the crucial CCB approval was being obtained. Several residents in the neighborhood, including four eleven Monmouth Street, four thirteen Monmouth Street, three twenty-seven Third Street, three thirty-three Third Street, are deeply concerned by a potential second approval in the same block. We request the board review the community impact statements and outreach clearly, in addition to taking into consideration the behavior of the applicant highlighted in this statement. We are a small building, and all resident owners of fifteen Monmouth Street oppose this application."
Thank you. We appreciate it. Anyone else from public? Anyone else from public?
Chair, if you know one from public, I would like to close the public portion.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded. Francisco, do you have anything you want to add?
I guess I'll briefly just mention that the application or the location of the app... The application is located in the NC one permit, which permits retail sales of goods and services. In terms of requirements, they do comply with that. In terms of separation distances, there's no schools within two hundred feet of this location. With regards to separation distances from other Class Five retailers, the two seventy Newark Ave location was approved on May ninth, twenty twenty-three, and is within six hundred feet, but as mentioned earlier, no permits have been pulled for construction of the Class Five retail space. Other than that, staff does recommend approval with conditions outlined in my staff report.
And counsel, have you had a chance to review those conditions? Why don't we, why don't we get you on mic, on record? We can have Francisco read them into the record if...
Yes, I see the conditions here. Let me just make sure I'm looking at the same ones.
Francisco, why don't we read them into the record then, please?
So, there's seven conditions in the report. The first is all materials and color selections shall be shown on final plans. No change to the facade and site design, including materials, as well as any changes that might be required by the Office of Construction Code, shall be permitted without consultation with and approval by the planning staff. The second one is all testimony given by the applicant and their expert witness in accordance with this application shall be binding. The third is prior to the issuance of any permit, the applicant shall seek and receive approval from the Cannabis Control Board and Cannabis Regulatory Commission. Fourth is the architect of records shall provide an affidavit confirming that development is built in accordance with the approved plans prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. The fifth is the memorialized resolution shall be recorded with the Office of the County Register and made part of the deed. In addition, documentation of the same shall be submitted to the Division of City Planning prior to the application for construction permits. The sixth is the applicant shall comply with all conditions of approval set forth on the record by the planning board and order of the Division of City Planning. And lastly, as was, as was mentioned earlier, the applicant shall revise the logo and work with staff to come up with a new logo for the location if the sign is denied by the state.
Yes, the applicant accepts all those conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Francisco, has this gone before city council yet or no?
No. That would be the last step. So, I don't know, I don't know if I mentioned it earlier, but they did receive the Cannabis Control Board license on February twenty-six of this year.
That's the local.
That's, that's the first step, yes.
That's the local cannabis.
Yes, that's the local cannabis.
Not the state license.
Not the state license.
So, Francisco, can you just, for everybody's edification, go through the process? Local Cannabis Control Board.
So, typically, it's, first would be the local Cannabis Control Board, so it'd be the CCB. The second step would be this step, which is planning board. And then the last step would be the, the city council. And then after that... Oh, which would be a local support resolution, and then the applicant would have full municipal approval for the license.
From the state.
From, from the city and state. Because I believe if you don't have the...
I can jump in here. So, once we have the, assuming we get it, the resolution of support from the city council, that gives us what we need to submit our conditional license conversion application with the state, and then it's still a, you know, a few-month waiting process to get the final license.
So, what's the process of the city council resolution?
I understand that we, if we are approved at the planning board, we submit that through Markea, who coordinates with the city council schedule, agenda, and we get heard and recommended for approval with, with, you know, open public comment period and everything like that.
Okay. So, there's a public hearing on it, and, yes.
They make application to the governing body for a resolution of support.
So, the time for public comment at a council meeting would be during the public comment portion of the meeting, and not when the resolution comes before the council because they're done by consent vote.
Okay. Is there notice sent out that this goes in, when it goes in front of city council?
There's an agenda that's posted where...
Notice is delivered to local residents.
Okay. Understood. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
So, I can be clear. No notice goes to the public residence of the...
For the city council meeting.
For the city council, not. It's just...
There's a notice.
You have to see it on the agenda.
It's, it's got to be found on the agenda.
There's a notice of the meeting.
Yes.
Generally available, and that notice has the agenda, and you, as a city resident, comb through the agenda looking for items of interest to you at the governing body. And that's true of all governing body actions. I'm not aware of any action. Ordinances have to be published, but I'm not aware of individualized notice at the governing body level, if that makes sense.
I understand. I just couldn't hear his answer clearly, so I just wanted to be clear about what he was being said.
And, and just from my own information, that would be found in the resolutions section of the city council agenda, which is towards the bottom of the agenda. After the first readings and the second readings, it lists resolutions?
Yes.
And that information would be found in that section of the council agenda?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And chairman, just because it's different in every local municipality, I believe here in the city, you can be placed on a list to speak in the public portions up at the council. Some local municipalities, you show up and you're able to speak during the public. Some places, you have to get put on a list in order to be heard. So, obviously, that's what it is.
So, in Jersey City, you do have to call the county, the city clerk and be put on a list. You're afforded three minutes? She always took my time. She took that idea from me. So, yeah, you do have to call the city clerk, sign up to speak at that meeting. When you find that resolution is being heard in front of city council, and you'll be afforded the time to speak. Okay. Thank you. We'll entertain a motion then.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two four dash zero zero four two presented to the board for approval.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval.
All right. On a motion to approve, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Prince Ray.
Abstain.
Commissioner Torres.
Just a quick little comment on this project. I've been on the board for a little bit, a couple of years, and as we looked at the master plan and I see projects throughout Jersey City come, situation and some stuff, most of the time, they're as a right, they're allowed to be developed and allowed to be built. One thing we found on, since I've been on this board, it's basically about twelve years now, is really helps when they communicate with the residents and the people of the community. Sometimes, the master plan has a plan for the greater better of its community. Certain things don't fit in. Born and raised in downtown Jersey City, the bar gin has been there since I was a little kid. Eddie's Pub on the corner, I think it's got a different name now, Abbey's or something, has been there since I was a little kid, growing up in the neighborhood, and certain things don't fit in. Certain things fit in on York Avenue. Certain things just don't fit in certain residential neighborhoods. And I think we should keep this in mind. We should keep this in mind. When you walk around a neighborhood and you see a neighborhood, I'm going to give a quick example. Ocean Avenue redevelopment plan. I live up on Neptune Avenue now, grew up downtown. We don't want to see more liquor stores on Ocean Avenue. I don't want to see liquor stores in my neighborhood. They serve a purpose, but they also bring a crowd of people in front of there that brings problems. This situation doesn't do that, but it just doesn't fit in the community. So, with that, it might be as a right, but the process you took to do this and not talking, the size of the space, for the ones that we did in the beginning, is like, looks so small to me, but besides that, this doesn't fit into that neighborhood. And with that, I'm going to vote a very big no for this project.
Commissioner Gangadin.
I just want to thank the public for coming out this evening and voicing your concern. My vote is no.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Thank you for coming out the public and giving your opinion, and my vote is no.
Commissioner Stomato.
I vote no.
And Chairman Langston.
Let's make it unanimous then. That's a no.
All right. So, five against and two absten, absten, two abstained. So, the motion does not carry.
Okay. So, we need another motion, correct, Santo?
You can entertain another motion.
I can entertain a motion for denial then.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny case P two zero two four dash zero zero four two.
The seconded.
Okay. Motion and seconded for denial. And just for the board's clarity, a affirmative vote is for denial.
Okay. On a motion to deny, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Prince Ray.
Abstain.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes, I'll deny.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. So, the yes would be...
Yes, right?
Okay. Commissioner Stomato.
Yes.
And Chairman Langston.
Motion carries. Application is denied.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to new business. Item nine is the discussion of annual planning board reorganization. Matt, are you still with us? So, let's just...
So, yeah, I have a hand cramp. I've had one for almost ten years.
You too.
I think I'm stepping, stepping down from my deputy secretary duties. I hope the board accepts me stepping down.
It's... Do we have to accept your resignation? No.
I don't know. You have to ask your counsel.
No.
Counsel, do we have to?
You have a new one? New one.
Serving roles that they, they can't serve in.
So...
If you'd like to step down.
So, Matt is stepping down as deputy secretary of the board.
Correct.
That is still with the planning department.
Yes.
It's not...
Absolutely.
Certainly not our jurisdiction, but Matt is stepping down as deputy secretary. Cameron is our secretary, so...
And we will get a replacement.
Yeah, we'll get a re- Yeah, we'll get a replacement in a, hopefully, I don't know, he hasn't presented his case to us yet, but, uh, okay, so do we need a vote to withdraw as Matt, withdraw Matt's nomination for that position?
Matt has resigned the position, so we just have to accept his resignation as deputy secretary.
Okay, do we do that with a vote or not with a vote?
It's not necessary.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Thank you for your service, Matt.
Well, then for the record, thank you, Matt. Glad you're staying on board.
Okay, so that being said, um, I'd like to nominate Eric Beasley for deputy planning secretary.
Second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, we got a-
Cam, can we do a roll?
I'll, I'll do roll.
Let Eric do the roll call.
Yeah, don't want a conflict of interest. Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Big I.
Commissioner Gangadin. Councilwoman Prince Ray.
Matt, thank you for your service. Eric, welcome, congratulations. Well, maybe, congratulations.
Commissioner Torres.
Matt, thank you for all the guidance you've given us. You stepped up when you came on board very well. And I, I, I know the same, Eric's gonna do the same. And thank you, big I.
Commissioner Stomato.
Matt, wish you all the best. Thank you for everything that you've done for us. We really appreciate it. Welcome aboard.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Okay, the I and Chairman Langston.
So Matt, to, first of all, thank you. Do I have to delete your cellphone from my phone now? I probably should. Eric, I'm gonna need a cellphone from you, but it's an I.
Okay, motion carries, all in favor. Eric is deputized.
So we're gonna move on to item 10 is case P two zero two four dash zero zero three eight is a preliminary and final major site plan for 174 Martin Luther King Drive. Good evening again, council.
Good evening. For the record, Charles Harrington of Connel Foley, on behalf of the applicant, I did provide public notices in connection with this application, although we are not requesting any variances. And I have those for Mr. Alampi to review.
Chairman, I received the affidavit publication proof of mailing with respect to the application of Harmony House Holdings LLC. Had the opportunity to review this prior to the meeting electronically. This document appears to be the original of those documents. For purposes of record, we're gonna mark it as A1. Jurisdiction is proper before the board.
Thank you, council.
Okay, thank you. Before I hand this over to Mr. Lewis to present the project, I just want to give a little background on it. This is a project that we've been working on for some time. We think it's, it's a, it's a great project. It is, as I noted earlier, an as a right project because we're not asking for any deviations. My client has been designated as the redeveloper of the site by the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency. They have already purchased the property from the, the agency and they have a redevelopment plan, a redevelopment agreement in place. Now, it's a, it's a five-story building with residential above, 44 units and retail on the ground floor. You'll see as, as part of the presentation and the application, we're proposing 10 affordable units. Now, the 10 affordable units is not required by the redevelopment plan, but it's a result of negotiations with the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency and with my client's agreement with community development for affordable housing trust funds. So if, if this were built without those agreements in place, you'd only have to provide 5% of the, of the units on, on the upper floor. I believe this is actually, yeah, it's five stories. So the project is, is providing, you know, much more affordable units than would otherwise be provided. So that is a plus. It's just a kind of a little nuance here. The property is loaded in, loaded, is located, I'm thinking about the cannabis. But it's located in the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan and the Turnkey redevelopment plan area. So when you have a split zone under the redev- the land development ordinance, the property with the greater lot area controls the zoning. So in this instance, that's the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. So that's the, the regulations and zoning that we're, we're going under with regard to this development. I know for the record that my client did meet with the community as well for this project. So, you know, he's, he's taken all the steps to get here and he's, you know, excited to present this and hopefully start, start soon. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Lewis.
Hi. Yes, I do. Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I S.
Mr. Lewis, good evening.
Hi.
We've qualified you all the time, every meeting for the last 13 years. What am I here, 11 years?
Feels that long.
Your, your license is current tonight?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you. Okay, so we're looking at 174 dash 178 MLK Drive. This is a vacant through lot, so we have frontage both on MLK Drive, that's the longer street, as well as Stegman Street. What we're proposing here is a five-story mixed-use building. We have 1,788 square foot commercial space, which is facing MLK Drive. We have 15 car parking spaces and 44 residential units. Those units break down as 12 studio apartments that average 523 square feet, 16 one-bedroom apartments that average 746 square feet, 12 two-bedrooms that average 896 square feet, and four three-bedroom apartments that average 1,009 square feet. So here, we're looking at the site plan. We are proposing new concrete curbs and new concrete sidewalks for both street frontages. We do have a new 10-foot curb cut on Stegman Avenue. And we're proposing three new street trees. And other than that, our building will cover 100% of our lot. So there's no site plan stuff for our property itself. Here, we're looking at the first floor plan. And I'm gonna start at Stegman where the garage entry is. So the garage provides entrance to the parking area. Along the way, we have our meter rooms as well as our sprinkler room, as this will be a fully sprinkler building. And then we have a room for bicycle storage, which has space for 25 bicycles. And then lastly, we enter the parking area, which has space for 15 cars, including one ADA spot. The parking area also has direct access to the trash and compactor room here as well as to the main residential lobby. That main lobby goes through to MLK, where the main entrance is. And the main lobby provides access to the elevator, to the main staircase, to a parcel room, to a 400-square-foot gym with an ADA bath, and then a smaller 321-square-foot office that also has an exterior door directly out to MLK Drive. The building also has a second entrance from MLK Drive, which leads directly to stair number two. And then, as I mentioned, we have this large commercial space, which also has its own ADA bath and also has direct access to that trash and compactor room. So it can use it as well. Looking at the second floor, I mentioned previously that we're covering 100% of the lot. At the second floor, we're starting to cut away a little bit from there to provide some window wells. So we have two window wells at the top, one here at the bottom, and then a third, a fourth here on the right. And then lastly, at the rear of the building, we cut away a decent amount of section to provide for windows at the back. The space that we cut away at the rear, we're using for private terraces. There are four apartments on this floor that have access to their own private terrace. Other than that, we have 11 apartments on this floor. It breaks down as three studios, four one-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms, and one three-bedroom. All of the apartments are ADA adaptable. They all have washer dryer in the apartment and they all have heating and cooling via PTAC units. Moving on, here we're looking at the upper floors, the third and fourth floor. These floors are exactly the same as what's below, with the exception of not having the patio space in the backyard. Here, we're looking at the roof plan. So both stairs and elevators are, both stairs, excuse me, both stairs and the elevator are going to the roof to provide access. On the roof, we have a 3,364-square-foot patio as well as a total of 5,750 square feet of green roof trays. We also have some raised beds along the side here and also along the front here. And I'll show what that's for when we get to the elevations. And so as you can see, the, the deck is set back from both of the street frontages. Now, we're gonna move on to the front building elevation. So the front elevation, our main finish is a smooth light gray brick. That's the main finish of the building. All of our windows and doors have black aluminum frames. And we also have black PTAC grills, which will match those window frames. Our second material is a cedar-finished fiber cement panel. And we're using that, using that as an access between the windows on the upper levels and also in a few places as an accent on the ground floor. Most of the ground floor has a glass finish, especially at the commercial space. And then below that glass, we have dark gray brick finish. There's a sign band across the top separating the first floor from the floors above. This sign band is three feet tall. It's wrapped in black aluminum and actually projects out about two feet. At the top of the building, we have a three-foot-tall cornice. This cornice is wrapped in black aluminum. However, it is open with a cable rail system. And the intent here is that we have the planters behind the cable rail system and we're gonna plant some ivy and climbing plants that will climb into the cable rails. That's, that's the intention here. This is the left side elevation. We have a, on the ground floor, we have, wait, hold on, I'm sorry, this, excuse me. This is the Stegman Avenue elevation. This is Stegman Avenue here. So at the ground floor, we have that black-grooved metal overhead garage door shown here. The main finish of the building is the same, the same brick as we're using at the front. However, we do have some of the accent details are a little different. The accents between the windows are now dark gray metal panels. And then we also have a two-foot-tall dark gray cornice, which is also going to be wrapped in metal. And like I said, dark gray. Now, we're looking at the left elevation. At the ground floor, we're providing a smooth stucco finish, which would be painted gray. Above that, we have light gray vinyl siding, black-framed aluminum windows, and again, black PTAC grills, which will match those windows. And then lastly, this is that long rear elevation. Same as, as previously, we have the smooth stucco finish painted gray at the ground floor, light gray vinyl siding, most of what's above. However, in, in the little inset section that I mentioned at the back, we're going to use fiber cement siding. And we're gonna use two different colors for that. One would be a light gray. And then we have a section that'll be a light brown, just to give a little color to the back here. And that actually concludes my presentation of this project. I can answer any questions you might have, unless you have some.
No, I have nothing. That, that would conclude our presentation, unless you have any questions.
Just a couple real quick, and council, the first one's for you.
Okay.
I know you said it on record, 10 affordable units. Our agenda says 10. The application, general application says 5. So just for the record, we're talking about 10.
We are talking about 10. That, that might have been a prior application after they met with the community development regarding the affordable housing development funds, it got increased to 10.
Okay, excellent. So the resolution, whether it's approval or denial, is gonna say 10?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lewis, do you have a, a unit mix of the affordable units? Or is that still out there?
I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head, but that is, that is something that we specifically work out with the Division of Affordable Housing, because there will be an affordable housing agreement and it's all consistent with chapter 188 of the, the ordinance.
Okay. And, um-
I just, just to confirm then, that would be the UHAC standards, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, excellent. And I know this standard is in there, but I always condition it anyway, that all the affordable units have the same amenities, fit and finish, no different materials from the other market rate units, correct?
That, that's correct, and that again is part of the ordinance now.
Sure. Okay, excellent. The last question is, is there a warning system for the garage?
We weren't showing them, but we could have the flashing light there for when the garage door opens.
I, I think it's, you know, safer.
Yep, no problem, we can agree to that.
Okay, excellent, thank you. That's it for me. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. And council, that's your presentation? All good?
That, that's our presentation.
Okay, is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone here from public?
I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Eric, do you have anything you want to add, Mr. Deputy?
Yes, upon reviewing the application, staff has determined that the proposal does comply with the applicable standards in the redevelopment plan. The staff has also determined that the proposed development aligns with some of the objectives in the redevelopment plan, such as providing a range of housing types with its affordable housing components as well as developing or proposing to develop on a, on vacant lots. I did some research and seems that these lots have been vacant of principal structures for at least 17 years or so. I think this development's actually a really good addition to this community. Staff recommends approval contingent upon the applicant agreeing to comply with the conditions in the staff memo dated November 4th, 2024.
Yes, we would agree with those conditions and the conditions stated on the record.
Excellent, thank you, council.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P two zero two four dash zero zero three eight as presented to the board tonight with the conditions outlined.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval with conditions.
Vice Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
I like parking there and then affordable housing, which is 10, so I would vote aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
This is a great addition to the neighborhood. 12 affordable units is, is a huge compliment to the, to the building as well and to the neighborhood. I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah, this is gonna be great, seeing these empty lots for 17, 20, 30 years. It's like time that's, goes on it, but you couldn't ask for something better than this. And the fact that they were started with five affordable that went up to 10, that's awesome. So with that, I vote aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ray.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Yeah, this is an easy aye for me. My wife works right down the street at 41 School and, you know, I'm happy to see some affordable units there. I'm sure she'll be happy when I get home tonight and tell her, but it's an easy aye for me. Good job.
Motion carries, all in favor.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
That's fine. Okay, let's call item 11 is case P two zero two four dash zero zero five five is a minor site plan with C variance for 168 Monticello Ave.
Good evening, everyone.
I don't think that's on.
It's on.
No. Is it?
Try it.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Not through the mic.
Testing, testing. Always wanted to do that.
You're on.
Good evening, all. Crystal Wheatley on behalf of the applicant for 168 Monticello Ave. We properly noticed as required. I've provided the, the originals. This application, oh, I apologize, first I ask that, that it be marked for evidence?
Sure.
Chairman, I received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application 168 Monticello Ave here in the city. Had the opportunity to review it. It does appear to be in order. Gonna mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
All right, thank you, council.
Thank you very much, council. This application is for proposed community sen- This application is for proposed community center, which we believe will be a welcome addition to this community. The application is for primary and final major site plan approval and approval of C variants, bulk deviations, and also for maximum building height and variances for a minimum rooftop appurtenance setback and all other variances deemed necessary by the board. On tonight, I have with me witnesses Vincent Marchetto, who is at the podium, Gabrielle Gornelli, our engineer, and Carolyn Worstel, planner.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
I do. Yes, my name is Vincent Marchetto, V-I-N-C-E-N-T-M-A-R-C-H-E-T-T-O.
Mr. Marchetto, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Okay, great. I should be... I have an application up on my screen here.
We see it? Nope.
It's on our screen. There it is.
Great.
Mr. Marchetto, these are the same plans that were submitted. Any difference?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. This project is a minor site plan on Monticello Ave, 168 Monticello Ave. And it's between Gardner and Belmont Ave. And it's in the Jackson Hill Redevelopment Plan. And what this project is all about, it's a small 20 by 80 lot. So, it's very compact. It's not a normal-sized lot. And it currently hosts the Continuous Flow Christian Center. And this center is looking to upgrade and expand their facilities within the current footprint of the property that they own. And to do this, what they would like to do is to take their current one-story structure that they have and expand it to a four-story structure. This new facility is going to host two new community rooms. It's going to host a commercial kitchen that can serve the community. And it's also going to host office space that could house the operations for the center. Now, I'm just going to talk briefly, a little bit about the front of the building, and then I'll go into the plans. As you can see, as I said before, the name of this center is the Continuous Flow Christian Center. And the architectural lines on the front facade, which is the only public-facing part of the building, represent that center. And they flow from the sky down to the earth. And that represents the kind of the brand. And the real goal of this building and new facade design is to create an uplifting and new look for Monticello Ave. And that's what we're all about. So, now, I'm going to go into the plans. So, as you can see, I said before, this building is on a 20 by 80-foot lot. So, it's a very narrow and long project. And to accommodate a space that could host a community, what we did is we pushed the stair elements, vertical circulation, to the north and to the south. You could see here on the ground floor plan, you come in off Monticello Ave into a vestibule. There's restrooms available and access to an elevator, so the building is ADA compliant. There's two means of egress. One discharged directly to the street and one discharged through the ground floor. The ground floor would host a large community room of over 850 square feet. And then there would be a basement. And in the basement, it would mirror the size of that community room as well. The basement also could host trash storage for the building and utilities hookups from Monticello Ave. Moving up, on the second floor, you're going to have a large commercial kitchen of around 720 feet. That kitchen will be able to make meals for the community and drop them off into the service area where messengers could come and pick up the food and bring them to where people need them. And then finally, above that, on the third and fourth floors, the more of the office component of the building. The third floor is going to have an open office space, which had room for about 12 desks. And then moving up to the top floor, that would host two private offices and a large conference room. And finally, on the roof, you'll see there would be a roof deck that'd be accessible from a stair and the elevator. There are two small variances associated with this project. One of them happens to come from the appurtenance distance from the front face of the building to Monticello Ave. It's a little bit too close. But the reason why we have that variance is because we're trying to push these core elements as far away as we can from each other to make a workable space in the center of the building that communities can gather in. The other use variance that we have, and you could see here on the front elevation, is the building for this size lot, the redevelopment plan permits a 45-story building. We have a 48-story building. And the main difference is that there's no residential in this project. All of this is office use. It's a community kitchen. It's a gathering space. And those uses typically facilitate a little bit of a higher ceiling heights. So, we have 12-foot consistently on each floor to accommodate those uses. And that adds up to a total of 48 feet of building height. And with that, I have two models here that show the building. If you'd like to pass it around, you can get a better understanding of what the facade could look like.
Can you pass it?
Yep. That's just the front facade blown up. And then this is an overall, you can kind of see the proportions and size of this unique project. And that concludes my testimony.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marchetto. The lights on the front?
Yes.
Hours of operation, when are they on? Are they on 24/7?
The lights would conform with the ordinances of Jersey City. I imagine that it wouldn't be very bright light. It'd be very dim, just to accentuate some of the lines on the front of the building. Wouldn't interrupt anyone's nighttime view of the neighborhood. So, I just thought it would... Because Monticello Ave is historically, it's a main street. It's a commercial street. And adding some lighting elements and help bringing that street alive again is what I think this project could bring.
Okay. Agreed. No, the design's great.
Mr. Marchetto, can you bring up the picture again? Where we can see it? Yeah.
Okay. That was my only question. Anybody else? Anyone?
Yeah. Quick question. Well, I want to apologize for saying something when you started speaking, because I was going to scream out hallelujah or something like that, because this is like... What a view on Monticello, haven't you, man? You know? Yeah, it's like... Yeah, I'm real excited here. This is... To drive down Monticello and see this. Yeah, it's an awesome view. It's beautiful. And a quick comment. I work in the mechanical parts of buildings. And yes, you do need a 12-foot ceiling. When I walk into a building, there's a 12-foot ceiling. It makes my job a lot easier. And so, I understand that. With that, I commend you for this. Before you walk away to somebody else, nice design. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to ask, what's the size of the lot you have?
The lot itself is around 1,700 square feet. And the dimensions are 20 feet by 80 feet.
So, you are using the whole lot for this?
We're basically using the whole lot. It's just a small little piece on the back. But I'd say it's 99% covered by our building.
Okay, anything else?
Love the building. Absolutely love the building.
Absolutely beautiful.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marchetto.
You don't like the building? You don't like the building? Love the building. I think it's pretty cool. Boy, I gotta shut this off.
I do. Gabrielle Gornelli, G-A-B-R-I-E-L-L-E, G-O-R-N-E-L-L-I.
Ms. Gornelli, good evening. We've qualified you as well in the past. Your license is current?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. You're qualified.
Thank you. Mine's going to be a little more boring than Vince's. But so, what I have on the screen is the civil plans that were submitted. As Vince mentioned, we're a very narrow lot, 20 feet of frontage on Monticello Ave. On the screen, I have our C 301 sheet. It's our site plan. We're proposing sidewalk improvements, curb improvements, a bike rack, Jersey City standard bike rack for two bikes. On this plan, you see, we are proposing... Because our site is only 20 feet of frontage, we don't have room for a tree pit with the utilities and the bike rack. So, we were proposing to upgrade a tree pit that's located to the north of our site. But in speaking with Cameron, we're going to do a payment in lieu instead to meet the ordinance on the street tree. And then on this sheet, I just have my grading drainage and utility plan. The site is not in a flood zone. Because of the size of the lot, we are not a major development for the stormwater ordinance. So, stormwater improvements are not required. And the site is serviced by utilities in Monticello Ave. So, we don't anticipate any need for public utility upgrades or anything. So, that concludes my engineering testimony.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gornelli. I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Good evening.
Good evening.
I do. It's Carolyn, C-A-R-O-L-Y-N, Worstel, W-O-R-S-T-E-L-L.
Ms. Worstel, good evening. We've qualified you also in the past. Your license is current?
It is.
Okay, thanks. You're qualified.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. So, as my colleagues just represent, we're explaining to you, we're here this evening. We have a wonderful building that we're really excited about for community use. And we're here to seek two sort of deviations from the redevelopment plan. One is for that building height. And then we're also seeking a variance for that minimum rooftop appurtenance setback from the Jersey City LDO. As Vince mentioned, with regard to the building height, we're proposing 48 feet, where 45 is the maximum permitted. Given our lot size, we are a very small lot. And because of that, 45 feet is the maximum we are permitted. We are proposing three additional feet of building height due to that 12-foot floor-to-floor heights for all four stories. As Vince showed you with the design, it really helps to create a more consistent rhythm with the building facade and also helps to create a better layout interior for those uses on those floors. In my opinion, the additional three feet will not have a substantial adverse impact on light or air to the adjoining properties. We are within a commercial district. And that additional height really isn't out of character for what could be here along Monticello Ave. If we were a slightly larger lot, you can have taller buildings that can go up to 5, 6 stories. So, that three additional feet, I don't believe, is going to be substantial impact. And obviously, again, it really helps this building function better and is really appropriate, given its stature as sort of a communal place. It helps to create that consistent design with the facade. So, I think overall, it can be justified to grant that deviation. We're also requesting that variance for the appurtenance setback, as Vince mentioned. Because we have such a limited footprint, we are sort of constrained as to where we can put our elevator and stair bulkheads. And so, in order to create usable floor layouts. So, that bulkhead for the elevator, which provides access all the way, ADA access all the way through the building up to the roof, is closer to the front facade of the building than we would typically like to see. But I believe that the benefit here, which is providing that access, outweighs that detriment of having it a little closer to the street than normal. And again, I think, given its location here on this commercial corridor, it really won't be a detriment to anyone. So, I think overall, that granting of the deviation and the variance will advance the purposes of the municipal land use law. It's consistent with purpose A, promoting the general welfare by providing a use, an expansion of existing community and facility center that really will support the community along the street and in the neighborhood. And it's really consistent with purpose I. It's really creating a desirable visual environment. Again, it's a beautiful building that really is going to become a really beautiful visual focal point for the community and for the street. So, I think it really is consistent with that purpose I. I don't see that granting the deviation and variance would result in a substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. The massing of the building is generally consistent with requirements of the redevelopment plan. And the proposed height will still allow for light air and open space to adjacent buildings. Granting requested deviations and variances will likewise not result in a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. It really does promote that purpose of the redevelopment plan, which is to continue the existing pattern of Main Street-type commercial buildings. So, this really is consistent with that kind of design of a commercial building. And then it creates additional employment, housing, education, recreation, commercial, and retail opportunities for the residents of Jersey City, which are best placed along this corridor to its central location in the city. So, again, I think that this is a really appropriate use and a really great location and will be an asset to the community and to Monticello Ave. So, I think overall, that the deviation and the variance can be granted and that they meet both the positive and the negative criteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
End of my testimony unless people have questions.
All right, anybody? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Worstel. Counsel, anything else?
That's all we have for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application?
Motion to close public?
Second.
I don't know, has Ben Juan coming up to comment?
I didn't think so.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, just a couple things. So, would the applicant's attorney just agree to the planning staff memo conditions dated December 3? Do you find those conditions acceptable?
Yes, those conditions are acceptable.
Okay, thank you. And then, planning staff agrees with the professional planners' testimony regarding the variances. We don't believe that they would have any detriment to the public's good, welfare, or well-being. And the ask for the variance allows for the intent of the use to come to fruition. So, planning staff finds that they're justified. And it would not have a detriment to the zone plan, our ordinance, or our master plan. And it was great working with your team. And planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Cam.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Case P 2024-0055 as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, look, we don't usually vote on... Well, we don't vote on aesthetics ever, but we can talk about it when we like a building or not. And this is a beautiful building. It's going to look beautiful in Monticello. And we don't think I've been... Everybody's talking about how long they've been on the board. And I've been here longer than everyone, by the way. And but I don't think I've ever seen a building like this. And it's absolutely beautiful. And the space that it's going to be used for, it's even better. So, and I believe the variances are de minimis and cause no detriment to the public. And it creates that desirable visual design element that we kind of lack a little bit in Jersey City, I think, in terms of creativity. So, I vote aye.
Commissioner Gongeden?
I'm very, very excited. And I'm excited for the community as well. The community center is so needed, especially in that area as well. And I'm going to use your word again, new and uplifting look for the neighborhood. It is very, very beautiful. Love it. I think the variance is minimal and it meets the objectives and the goals of the master plan. Big aye for me. Can't wait to see it.
Councilwoman Prince Ari?
Yeah, so, I'm in agreement. I think that the variances are well within the realm of the ask. I think that it will absolutely make the project better. I also agree that 12 feet, when you're doing community center space for whatever it's going to be, gives people an opportunity to feel like they're not in a claustrophobic space, which is also going to be really important to the success of this. And I applaud you all for really considering the needs of the community as well as you re-envision this space. I think it's really important that places where people come to congregate, and whether it is Christian Center or any sort of place of worship, really keep that in mind and forefront, because it is really the service of the community that is so important here. So, it's nice to see that aesthetic also echoed on the outside of the building and sort of tells that story from the moment you see it all the way through. I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres?
The variances are minimal compared to the building. And just like the other commissioners, but I couldn't hold myself. So, I had to say while the architect was... had to say while the architect was still up there, the excitement of seeing this building. And I did, I wasn't in control. But it's a beautiful thing. It's cool, so hopefully it brings the youth into that building. It looks like it'll suck them in, and I hope it does. And your gold and your dreams in this building, it's just amazing. And I just, for anybody that's part of this building, part of this congregation that are here in the audience, my vote's going to bring a lot of prayers that nothing stops you from finishing this project. Hopefully you never come back to us again, and the job gets done. And that is going to be with my vote of yes, and I do make that promise in my prayers. Thank you very much for bringing this building up to Monticello. Thank you.
Commissioner Tomato?
I can't really add after that. I vote yes. Great job, great team, you did a great job, and very proud of what's been done.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Yeah, I was wondering, it was such a beautiful front thing and such a small space, and then you have made four stories with so much facilities for people. And I hope you guys invite us when you have the first day of opening, you know? We would love to come there. I vote aye.
And Chairman Langston?
So I'm going to get the legal part out of the way. I agree with Cam's testimony, Ms. Worstel, the detriment, the variances, the positives far outweigh the detriments. Mr. Marchetto? Awesome. Great design, I love it. It's going to draw people in, it's a statement piece, and it's an easy aye for me. It's, you know, you're doing so much with that space. It's just, it's set up perfectly. So best of luck, and congratulations, my vote's aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
All right, thank you. Mike, you want to get five in now? We're going to take a five-minute break now because I don't want to take a break in the middle of the next application, so.
Thanks, have a good night. Yeah.
Like Mr. Wine.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you guys?
I'm well.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Chairman, received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the property at 107 Morgan Street here in the city. I've had the opportunity to review the electronic version. This looks to be the original version that was uploaded. It does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
I just want to start by saying we are tremendously excited to be here this evening to present this application. This has been a long process that has involved a lot of coordination with the city and with city planning. Just to give the brief overview before I go into a little bit of the background, this is 107 Morgan Street. It's Block 11612, Lot 1. It is a current parking lot that is bound by Morgan and Steuben, Morgan Street, Steuben Street, and Warren Street. It is located in the Powerhouse Arts Redevelopment Plan area, and specifically, it is located in the high-rise district. Just the specs of the building, it is a 34-story mixed-use development. We are proposing 633 dwelling units, 213 parking spaces, and 19,635 square feet of ground floor commercial space. So just to kind of go over how we got to the size and density in this building, there are three major components to this project, all that deal with community givebacks to the city. Some are required in the redevelopment plan, one of them is not. But the most important one is that in order to obtain the height and the floor area that we are proposing this evening, we are required to work with the city to rehab 335 Washington Street, also known as the Boiler Building, and deed it to the city, and the city would accept it. I'm happy to say that that was completed as of last week. The city now owns 335 Washington Street. The second component here is 95 Morgan Street, which is an empty lot fronted on Washington Street. It's currently used by the city, excuse me, by the Boys and Girls Club to plant their garden there. That is also going to go to the city, and it will be taken over by the Exchange Place Sid, who will be, we believe, building a playground there for the community. Finally, there is a proposed public arcade for the building, which will be publicly accessible. That is 500, excuse me, 5,200 square feet. That is required by the redevelopment plan, and it will compose of multiple art elements to it, which we will work with the city to provide. We did meet twice with the, with the Padna Community Group, and we are seeking a few variances here. None of them relate to adding additional square footage to the building. They are largely design-driven. So with that said, I am going to have my first witness come up, who is Gabby Cornelli, who is our civil engineer, and he'll follow up with our architect.
And just for the record, if you could state that you know you're still under oath and are still qualified tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So what's on the screen now? This is, this is just the maps, which are on our civil cover sheet. Our sheet G001, it's just to orient you to the site. 107 Morgan Street, it fronts on three streets. Morgan Street is to the north, Warren Street is to the west, Steuben to the south. To the east, it's Block 116, 11612, Lot 2. It's a 13-story building there. And on the west side you'll see is where we have that 25-foot arcade. The site is currently a surface parking lot primarily. There's minimal vegetation and minimal fencing. The site is located in the Powerhouse Arts Redevelopment Plan in the high-rise zone. And as mentioned by our attorney, it generally complies with redevelopment plan. There are some variances which will be talked upon by our planner.
So counsel, are we going to go through the slide deck, and is it different and a combination of the various professional drawings that have been submitted? Because that's kind of how it sounded.
For right now, we're just testifying to the civil plans that were provided. We do have a presentation that is kind of a mix between our architect and our landscape engineer, so when we get there, I will ask that that presentation be added.
It's all one.
Oh, it's all part of what, I apologize. Then yes, we will be.
Let's mark it as A2. It appears to be 31 slides.
Yes, I do not have 31 slides myself.
That's disappointing.
So now what's on the screen, it's our civil site plan, our sheet C301. So this, this shows the building, which takes up the majority of the lot. We do have that arcade on the west side, which connects Steuben Street to the south to Morgan Street to the north. The landscape architect will, will talk further on that. It's a minimum of 25 feet in width. The building lobby is on the northwest corner of the site. It's set back from, from the sidewalk a little bit. There is retail along Morgan Street, retail along Warren Street. The majority of our back-of-house is along Steuben Street. We have our parking garage entrance, then we have some utility rooms, and then we have our loading dock with two loading spaces. The arcade also has some, you know, art gallery space, which, which will be further discussed as mentioned by the attorney. Near our lobby, we do have a 45-foot-long lay-by lane on Warren Street. This was added after one of the community group meetings, who the community group expressed concern about adding a lay-by lane by the lobby. We are anticipating the bulk of our, you know, loading will be handled by the loading dock, which is on Steuben Street, but, you know, to handle Ubers, Uber Eats, food drop-offs, things like that, we did provide this lay-by lane. And we met with Division of Transportation Planning to add that in and also show some striping improvements on the road. It's 45 feet long, it'll fit approximately two cars. As you'll hear from our planner, we do have a sidewalk variance. The minimum sidewalk width is 16.5 feet. We only have a variance adjacent to this lay-by lane, where our minimum sidewalk is almost 13 feet. It's 12 feet 11 inches. So that variance is a direct result of adding that lay-by lane. We do have some street trees and planters, which will, the landscape architect will discuss further. We do, we are showing some rain gardens, which will be a stormwater improvement as well along the street. The next slide, this is just my circulation plan. I'll just touch briefly on this. You see in the blue a passenger vehicle going into the garage, and you see in the red a SU-30, a typical box truck, entering our loading space. And as I mentioned, we have two, two loading spaces. The next sheet, this is my grading and drainage plan. The site is located in a flood zone. Because of that, our residential lobby is required to be one foot above the base flood elevation. The base flood elevation is elevation 11. Our lobby is at elevation 12. That allowed for a, you know, little plaza area to get us up to that 12 elevation. The existing grades around the site are around elevation 7. The rest of the building, you know, the retail spaces along Morgan and Warren and our utility spaces are at that street level to activate the, the street tape and the pedestrian experience. These spaces will be flood-proofed in accordance with the building code and the NJDEP flood hazard rules. We actually, we do have a flood hazard permit in hand, and we're, we are in the process of applying for a modification due to some minor interior changes to the, to the layout of the building. Given the size of the site, it is a major development per the Jersey City Stormwater Control Ordinance, which requires green infrastructure, as well as, because we're in the flood zone, we're required to meet the green area ratio. We are complying with the ordinance, we do meet the green area ratio requirement, and we do have a detention basin, subsurface basin, under the, the parking garage entrance. In general, the conversion of this from a surface parking lot to a building, which is considered a clean runoff, whereas a surface parking lot is considered a dirty runoff, is a, is a stormwater benefit to the neighborhood. And then, just to touch briefly on my other utilities using the same sheet, the building is serviced primarily by utilities in Warren Street and Steuben Street. There's water and gas are coming out to Warren Street. Sanitary is coming out to Steuben Street, and stormwater, as I mentioned. And then we have electric vault rooms on our Steuben Street facade for, for the electric That concludes the civil testimony unless there's any questions.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any at this point. Anybody else?
The loading docks where the trucks are going to back into the loading dock space on Stevens, is there parking in front of that street too? Do cars park on Stevens?
There are, there are no, there are no spaces. So if you can see the, the striping of where the lane is, it's, it's.
There's no parking in front of that area. So a truck will always back up without anything in the way.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cornelli.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our architect, Paul Albano.
Yes, Paul Albano, that's A-L-B-A-N-O.
Mr. Albano, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
All right. Well, I'm going to start with, I know you have an overview of, let me just, a second. All right, so, starting with the, starting with the overview, I think it was pretty clear of the location of the site being on, between Morgan, on Morgan, between Steuben and Warren Street. The building is 600, we're proposing 633 residential units, made up of about 716,000 gross square feet. That square feet is broken up into residential, retail, which is 19,635 square feet, which includes 4,203 square feet of gallery space. I'll show you that on the next plan. There's 79,000 square feet of parking, and then, which houses 213 cars. 204 of those parking spaces are for the residential, and nine of those parking spaces are for retail. Within the building, there's 329 bicycle parking spaces, of which 317 of them are for residential, and 12 of them are for retail. So I'm going to take you to the ground floor, which I think is, give you a summary. Gabby kind of walked you through where the entrance is. So starting at the corner, the residential entrance, the corner of Warren and Morgan, highlighted in yellow, is where the residential sequence would occur. So you would enter the building for residences on that, on that corner through the sequence of ramps and stairs, and then enter the building through the elevator lobby, which has access to loading in the rear. So the elevator lobby, as shown in the, as shown in the center here, has rear access for loading and, and move-ins. So there's access from the loading berths as well. So what's shown in yellow is residential, there's mailrooms, there's package rooms, there's back-of-house spaces to support the retail, excuse me, the residential components. And then what's shown in pink is what's all retail. All retail is street-facing, all retail's access from the street on both Warren and on Morgan. And what's highlighted in blue along Morgan End, which wraps and comes on, on the side of the plaza, is the gallery space, which is about 4,200 square feet. Sidewalk widening is, as shown, as required, with the exception as Gabby mentioned, and all building services are highlighted in gray. So PSE and G vaults, all services would come in through the rear of the building, which has been highlighted here in gray. So all the support services, all the mechanical equipment, all the move-ins, emergency generators, all the, all the points of entry for the building. That summarizes the ground floor. As we go to the podium floor, so this is a typical podium floor, which occurs on floors two to five, and it's where the first levels of parking start. So there's parking in the center of the building, which is wrapped by residential units, as you can see on all street sides, with residential units. There are about 30 units on this floor. The interior space that's not residential, that does not have light and air, was utilized for either bicycle parking and/or tenant storage space. So on, on floors two and three, it's bicycle parking, and on floors four and five, it's tenant storage. That occurs from two to five. As we get to the sixth floor, it's the first floor that is a setback floor. So the initial setback starts on six, and on that level, highlighted in yellow, is all of the interior amenity space for the residents. In addition to the interior space, there's exterior space on the terrace, and as you can see, there's swimming pools, outdoor lounge spaces, there's gathering spaces, there's a dog run, there's some exterior fitness space, there's children's play area, and there's even thoughts of potentially having exterior screening of movies if possible. And that occurs on the sixth floor. As we get above that, this is a typical tower floor, so this is a typical residential. Once you get above six, now you're into the residential portion of the building. All floors are residential from the sixth floor to the 34th floor, or to the 33rd floor. 34 has a combination of amenity space as well. But there's about 16,000 square feet per floor plate on this floor, and there's about 23 residential units on average on each of these floors. So this is, this takes you to 33, and as we get to 34, is where I mentioned, a portion of the 34th floor has residential units that face Warren Street, and then there's an amenity space. So when you come out of the elevators, essentially, if you went left out of the elevators, depending on which elevator you came out, you'd be in a residential side, and if you went to the right, you'd be in the amenity side, which had, which has access to a terrace facing east. So very nice views from the terrace facing east. You can see Manhattan and Jersey, downtown Jersey City. So that takes us through the floor plans, with the exception of this roof plan, which is. is really just, houses the mechanical equipment. We're screening all of the mechanical equipment at the roof. There's a cooling tower at that level, or the level above this, the elevator overrun, car to supply for supporting the residential spaces, toilet exhaust. Basically, you know, the support system for the building that's not on the ground floor would reside up on this floor on the roof plan and, and above it, as a cooling tower needs outdoor ventilation. The building sections here show, just two building sections, to sort of identify the heights and setbacks and uses of the space. So everything in yellow is a residential use. Everything shown in pink is a retail use. And then, we try to highlight where there was back-of-house space, shown in the gray tone. So two sections, one cut through, section number one is cut, is cut through the Warren Street side, and you can see it's through the leg of the high-rise and facing, facing north. And the other elevation is cut through the long end from Morgan to Steuben. And that just shows you a little bit more at the top of where the cooling tower sits and how we screen the cooling tower. And the rooftop units all fall below the top of the highest point of the, of the, of the roof there. So, sectionally, floor-to-floor heights, there's nine foot eight floor-to-floor heights for all the residential units. That's gonna net a nine-foot ceiling, which is pretty common, where we have offsets and transfers and mechanical and amenity space. We tried to give a little more space, so that'll have, on the sixth floor, a little bit more height, about 11 foot eight, floor-to-floor, which will net closer to 10 feet with all the mechanical offsets and plumbing that have to come down through that area. So, sectionally, I think that maximizes the section of the 350 feet. We are measuring from the design flood elevation of 12, so the building stands at 362 feet So here's where we worked with another designer to basically design this building and make it work as, and let it fit into the neighborhood. So the, the thought was that it draws inspiration from the, the industrial heritage of the Powerhouse Arch District in Jersey City. We tried to, you know, design it so that the facade interpret the historic elements of, you know, through a contemporary lens, not, not literal, but creating a dialogue between the past and the present. The podium, as you can see in, with the red brick, we chose the red because it's a material drawing on the historic warehouse buildings in, in the area, with arch windows that really bring us back to and pay homage to the powerhouse building itself. So it's anchoring the design on that, on that podium level. There's gonna be an awning that wraps the facade at the ground floor, and that awning is pretty typical of the industrial canopies of the neighborhood that were here and still remain here. So there's, there's a functionality behind it, but there's also a design sensibility to it. And then rising above the podium is the tower, which appears dark, it's a dark tonal palette, and it extends the aesthetic, the industrial aesthetic upward, trying to connect the design to the surrounding areas, while asserting a bold and contemporary presence on the skyline. Together, these elements create a facade that celebrates, in our opinion, the Powerhouse Arch District legacy, while embracing the future. So you can see, this elevation north is the elevation of Morgan Street. So, there's a, there's a good sense of, you know, as it touches the ground, all that artwork, which is reminiscent of the powerhouse building itself, and the same on Warren Street. What we tried not to do with the design was, we tried not to have a rear of the building. So essentially, all the sides of the building are treated equally, except for where we needed to provide, you know, the mechanical systems and so on. So for the most part, the building is treated the same on all four sides. You could see from the material, the material palette on the left here, that there's a combination of dark brick and the, and the reddish brick, along with metal panel and, and a Dekton panel, which is like a porcelain, porcelain ceramic tile. And then, these large, these enlarged elevations are just snippets of the building to show portions of the building, to show the signage, where signage would meet on the ground floor. So a typical retail space would all be treated pretty much the same, with retail signage above the door, retail blade signage above the door as well. So for pedestrians walking down the sidewalk, they'd be able to see the signage of the retail spaces. That canopy that I mentioned, that is reminiscent of warehouse, of the warehouse district, is basically shown around all, all sides of the building where there are retail space. Parking is discreet, but with a small parking sign, and an entrance to the parking garage, while the typical upper floors are defined by that dark tonal colors of that brick. And changing, changing the coursing on the brick, we felt helped a little bit too, as well as pronouncing some of the, the defining lines that kinda create a grid, or a, or a secondary grid, that help define the, the building and break up the scale of a tower that, you know, extends 100 feet along, you know, some of the streets. So we felt like that gave it more of a human scale. This is an enlarged palette drawing, if you wanted to, you know, look closer. It's the same as what was on the previous sheet. It just identifies the dark gray solja courses, the Dekton panels, the brick running bond in the dark color, as well as black metal window frames, and then the brick at the base, which would be that reddish brick reminiscent of the powerhouse. So, those are the, those are the images of the building in two dimensions. So now we get to the building rendering at the entrance. So this is a nighttime view of the entrance at, at Morgan and Warren. So the entrance sequence and that, that level change that Gabby was speaking to, the 12-foot elevation, we had to get from an elevation seven on the ground floor up to 12. So that's how we created that little, that sequence here. But you could see how the tower, kinda, the tower itself kinda disappears from the podium, which is nice, so it's that night, at least you see that the podium is, you know, ties into the neighborhood with, with these arches that are lit. And they will be lit, because all of it is residential and/or retail behind it. So there, there is no parking that would face any of this, any of the streets or any of these windows. Sorry about that. Another image, pretty much the same image drawn back from perspective-wise, just to show the entire facade of the building. It's an overall building image, is viewed from Warren and, and Morgan. So it shows you how the building terminates at the top, and provides us with that, a distinct a distinct top of the building, which we're working on a palette of some expanded metal mesh and some lighting to give us a set, to give us a termination at the top of this building. And you could see it from, you see these elevations where the, the arches continue to the top, so it does have a definition at the top. But at the portion where the, where the machine rooms and the cooling towers have to be screened, is where we're considering an expanded metal mesh that would be illuminated at night to be able to identify the building from, from a distance. Similar image with the illumination of the top of the building. So the bottom of the building is grounded, the center is, as, as shown in those dark tones, and then the top of the building is illuminated again, a little bit lighter, and to give it a sense of grounding or terminating of the building, actually. Actually, that image concludes my architectural presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I can't even believe, the only question I have is, is on a, a parking warning system.
Okay.
That, that's it. Is there one?
So we're considering, we're considering something that isn't a sound, but more of a, a lighting element.
Agreed.
Because we don't wanna make the neighborhood
No.
We don't wanna add noise.
No, I don't think that's
So we're considering just some flashing light or some warning system like that.
Okay. Excellent. Work with staff on it? What do you got, Matt?
One question about the lighting at the top. Is that gonna be, is that imagined to be daily? It's gonna illuminate the top? Or is that?
Yeah. It's, it's intended to be illuminated, pretty much.
Every night. Okay. All right.
To be seen.
To be seen.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
The Empire State Building.
Yeah, I don't know about the color changes, but maybe, maybe we could work that out. That's easy with lighting these days.
Yeah, I would think.
Yeah.
So Matt? That's not for a safety purpose, or it's just to be seen?
No, no, it's not FAA lighting.
It's not FAA, so? Cause I, I noticed you have it on the bottom part, not on the top. It'd be kinda confusing. Of the
Yeah, Mr. Albano, there's a requirement in the redevelopment plan that we have a significant top to the building.
Yes.
So that's the intent of
Right. So that was what, the significance of our top was to illuminate it and to
I understand.
Separate it from the, the other palette of colors in the building.
Not to belabor the point about a flashing light for parking versus sound, but for people who are visually impaired, please do keep that in mind when you are working with staff on what that, it doesn't have to be a loud sound, but there should be accommodation for that as well.
Yeah. Agreed.
Matt, you're comfortable working with the applicant on that?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So we'll just make the condition that the applicant works with planning staff on some kind of a parking warning light? Anybody else? Anything? Questions?
Nope.
Is the arcade open? Sky?
Yes.
You spoke of the arcade. Do we have a rendering? How does that look?
Yes, actually, the next
Our next witness.
You'll hear the next witness.
Awesome. Let's
All right. Let's show it.
Before, before I bring Mr. Savansky up to talk about not only the landscaping, but the arcade, the project, I just want to put on the record that there's a requirement in the redevelopment plan that we provide a significant public plaza. So that's what the intent of this arcade is. There's going to be both permanent and rotating art within there, which will also meet the requirements in the redevelopment plan. The intent is for that space to be a 24/7 publicly accessible space. We'll speak to that a little bit more when we get to Matt's comments. But other than that, I have Mr. Savansky to, to walk you through.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Timothy Savansky, S-Y-M-A-N-S-K-I.
Good evening. Sorry, I don't know if we've qualified you, have we?
No, you never have, actually.
Okay. If we could, let's qualify you. What's your background, your education?
Background, so I'm associate at Millivale Carmen. I've worked actually directly under Tom Carmen, who's been here plenty of times.
Sure.
New Jersey licensed landscape architect since 2010. Graduated from Rutgers University in 2005. I have appeared before planning boards in New Jersey, but have not unfortunately appeared before this board.
Perfect. Good. Thank you.
My license is current.
Yes. Thank you. You're qualified.
Wonderful. Okay. Okay, so this evening, thanks for having me. I will provide an overview of the landscape and lighting requirements for the public plazas, the streetscape, as well as the exterior recreation amenities proposed at the rooftops. So the first slide we're looking at is the composite rendered landscape site plan. And just to orient everybody to the site, enlarge this. Morgan Street is to the north, which parallels top the sheet. Washington Street to the east, which is off to the right side of the street. Warren Street to the west, on the left. And finally, Steuben Street to the south, on the bottom of the sheet. For context, we've included this plan, which depicts all landscape levels to understand how the levels interact with the building footprint. That includes the streetscape level with the amenity rooftops layered atop of it. As you just heard in the previous testimony, we're very excited to be here to present this design for the parcel, which completes the streetscape treatment treatments along the frontages as set forth by the Powerhouse Arch District Redevelopment Plan and the Jersey City Forestry Standards. So I'm very pleased to review the streetscape level plan for 107 Morgan, which is depicted at the same orientation as the composite plan you just saw. I will walk you through the streetscape improvements, and then focus on the creation of the eastern public plaza space, and share a few perspective graphics to support the public open space. So just some, some house items. Streetscape treatments, they'll comply with the Powerhouse, Powerhouse Arch District Redevelopment Plan, as well as the JC Streetscape Treatments, which provide consistency of the streetscape and pedestrian links with the neighborhood. The improvements include concrete curb, decorative pavers, colored scored concrete, and site lighting, which is all in compliance with the approved Jersey City light fixture. The plaza materials, which will complement the architecture, they're all appropriate for the urban environment. These will include architectural pavers, overhead arcade structure, as well as the planter walls with integral seating, which is also located in that rear arcade. Street trees are proposed in compliance with the 2018 Jersey City Forestry Standards in terms of variety, planting detail, as well as locational offsets to street lights, intersection crosswalks, garage entries, and utilities. On the three frontages along Morgan Street, Warren Street, and Steuben Street, we have street trees proposed. These are, these include black gum, willow oaks, sweet gum. And again, these are all in keeping with the Jersey City Forestry Standards. Beneath the street trees, a mixture of planted tree pits and rain gardens, as Ms. Gormelli had mentioned, line the three streetscape frontages and bound by planter guards, which again, are all in compliance with the Jersey City Forestry Standards. Additional planting in the way of deciduous and evergreen shrubs, as well as perennials and ornamental grasses, are located to complement the architecture and provide a layered textural effect. And all plant material is hardy for the area and has been located based upon sun and shade conditions, along with several native varieties that have been provided. And then moving on to the lobby entry, which Mr. Albano also mentioned, I have a perspective image, which depicts the lobby entry, which is located at the northwestern corner of the site, the intersection of Morgan and Warren Street. This includes multiple access points, has ramp and stair access. It will utilize materials that complement the architecture, and the lobby space will include terrace planting, which will help soften the hardscape. Turning our focus to the eastern edge of the site, which is something that everybody wanted to hear about, a public plaza space is carved out at the site between the 107 Morgan and the adjacent Washington Commons Building, along the eastern edge of the property line. The next two slides will depict a series of perspective views within the public plaza. So the plaza space is composed as an open space. Access from the pedestrian sidewalks at either end, from Steuben Street to the south and Morgan Street to the north. The open design will have an overhead door access from the adjacent art gallery space. Planter walls with integral seating run the length of the plaza. This is a mechanism to help draw visitors into the space and soften the harshness of the adjacent building scale. The vertical arcade structure, which was mentioned in a previous question, zigzags through the space, creates a sculptural element, and also provides interest and enclosure to the space. This is a view from the north, looking south. The overall plaza space has been designed to provide flexibility, so it allows it to transform and support a variety of seasonal uses. And then on a typical day, pedestrians and the neighborhood can enjoy a variety of seating options within the passive space. Now moving up to the building, sheets L-10, L-11, within the submitted site plan package, feature render landscape plans of the exterior rooftop amenities located on the sixth floor, the 11th floor, and the 34th floor rooftops. Mr. Albano did touch on this already, but I'll just reiterate some of the elements that are within the design. The amenities are, include pool and pool terraces, lounge seating, and barbecue and grilling opportunities, private terraces, overhead shade structures, a dog run, and additional garden spaces. All planting is appropriate for the roof, for these rooftop conditions. It will utilize engineered soil, along with the planter curbs and walls to provide appropriate soil volumes for the health of the plant material. And then finally, I'm pleased to say that as depicted on sheets L-12, 13, and 14, within the submitted landscape plans, 107 Morgan is in full compliance with the green area ratio requirements for the city. And that concludes the landscape testimony. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Just quickly to, to clarify, you said the 2018 or 2023 forestry standards?
2018.
Okay. They're, they're 2023 standards.
Okay. We'll be happy to work with
Yeah. You may have already seen them, but just to make sure that you're using the most of today.
Yeah, we've always worked off 2018.
No, we spent a lot of time on 2023. Yes.
Anybody? Any questions?
I have a question. The, the amenities in the open space area, you were depicting movable furniture. Is that, is that what's intended?
That's currently the, the scheme.
Will be there year-round? Yes, the arcade.
I think the answer is, is yes, that it will be there year-round. You know, obviously, if they need to do snow removal or things like that, maybe for a little bit of time, it won't be there. But other than that, yes, the intent is for it to be there. it to be there.
Okay. Are there also trash cans?
No, trash cans depicted right now, but we're happy to specify them.
Okay. I think if you're providing tables and chairs, you might want to consider that.
I believe there is a specification for it in the actual submitted landscape plans, but I don't believe there are locations.
Okay.
And one thing that I would also add to Matt's point is, we're going to have to enter into a plaza agreement with the city, and it will specify things like having trash cans out there, who will be maintaining that, us as the owners. So, you know, maybe we don't have them in a permanent place, but any agreement we enter into with the city is going to require that there be receptables.
Okay. Anything else, Matt? Good.
Nothing else, so it's time for you.
Okay.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir, we appreciate it.
And finally, Mr. Height will come up and briefly run through his testimony.
He's got to plug in and everything.
It's not that brief. I'm low on my battery. I love trees so much, I don't print out anything.
My man. Stop sucking up to the board, Mr. Height. Give us one moment.
Let's just go back.
Sorry about that. I'll get you that.
I'm ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did appear before the board earlier tonight, so I recognize I'm still under oath.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're still qualified.
Still qualified. We've been working on this application for several number of years, just in the early design phase, understanding the zoning, figuring out how to address certain issues, and really just a really thorough program, which we are presenting before you tonight. We are in the Powerhouse Arch District in the downtown section of the city. We're specifically in the high-rise zone. This zone does regulate towers in three main components in terms of the massing. We have an overall FAR capacity, so we're substantially below that. We also have a permitted maximum height, as well as certain step backs that are required. One of them I'll be addressing in terms of deviation relief. But other than that, it's a single parcel. It's Lot 1 on Block 11612. It's approximately 60,116 square feet. That's 1.3 acres, so it's a substantially large parcel in the downtown, hence a lot of the programming and able to integrate a lot of the compliance with the redevelopment plan goals and objectives. The subject property today is essentially a paved asphalt lot. It was primarily used, I would call it as an interim, because this redevelopment plan has been in place for a long time, as an interim use for surface parking. I did want to mention, and I confirmed with the applicant, that the surface parking today or what ceased a few months ago was daily parking spaces. No long-term parking commitments, no real dependency on providing that off-street parking in other locations, so it's a little bit more of a transient parking. And to be quite honest, it was substantially underutilized. Oftentimes, the parking lot where it was closed, used for trailers, for any sort of events in the area, and if you walked by the site today, you'd see a stage there related to filming, for again, an interim purpose. But just wanted to put that on the record. It was previously 95% impervious coverage. You can see by the design plans, including the street trees, the rooftop elements and compliance with the green area ratio, we're transitioning that into a much more permeable surface. So the project team really did detail a lot of the other aspects of the proposed application. Thirty-four stories, 634 units, 210 parking spaces. I'm going to be moving into the relief needed. We are requesting seven or six deviations from the redevelopment plan and one from the land development ordinance. I like to try and break these deviations into relatable or groups of relief. I'll start at the ground floor with streetscape aspects. There are three related to the massing of the building and the rooftop, and then one is the last one would be parking in terms of the minimum number of parking. With respect to the streetscape and the frontages along the ground level, there's a maximum permitted of utility frontage at 17%. This occurs on Steuben, where we're at 56%. Steuben is, for all intensive purposes, a back-of-house, if you will. The main objective is to try and limit the amount of what would be non-active frontages along the streetscape. Here, we are a property that's a cap lot by the current standards, so we have three frontages. In with respect to that, we also are trying to still instill the aesthetics of the overall building along that section. So aesthetically, we're still representing the overall architecture of the property, but we do have the loading, the entrance to the parking deck from Steuben, so that creates that deviation in terms of the percentage. We also have a setback variance, where the maximum setback at the ground level is 10 feet. This occurs at really that corner entrance plaza, where we actually have to set back the building to accommodate the staircase, the plaza, and the entranceway. It's a very common design technique to deal with elevating the lobby of residential spaces above the floodplain. Here, in this redevelopment plan, there's just a maximum requirement that we're exceeding. So from Morgan, it's 64 feet measured, from Warren, it's 41 feet 1 inch. Again, it creates a plaza space, it elevates, and it provides ADA access. So those are the benefits in terms of the design. For the vast majority of both street frontages, I think 80% along Morgan and 70% along Warren, it complies with the 10-foot setback. So we are setback 10 feet for the majority of those street frontages. The last one at the ground level is the minimum sidewalk width. We heard from Ms. Gormelli with respect to the required sidewalk being 16 and 1/2 feet. This deviation only occurs for the proposed loading zone, which we coordinated both with the members of the community to try and limit the amount of double parking, given the increase in unit count, as well as the division of transportation planning. So again, the loading zone length is 50 feet, where we only have 12, approximately 12 feet of sidewalk. 12 feet's still substantial to accommodate a higher amount of foot traffic, but in that instance, we are less than the 16 and 1/2. That's at the ground level. Those are the three deviations with respect to that aspect of the project. When we move up to the upper portion of the building, which I'll get into this diagram, we're dealing with step-back requirements. The redevelopment plan calls for what I call wedding cake design, meaning a tiered step-back as you go. It's very uniform, and it occurs at certain levels. We prepared this exhibit and modified it as the design changed, but this is up-to-date. It reflects the current elevations of the proposed project. You can see in the red where the requirements are, and in the blue where the proposed structure is. So the deviation is at the upper three stories, where our proposed structure does not set back five feet from the floors below. Below that, we comply with the minimum setbacks from the base facade. What this does is it creates a little bit more of a sleeker, more modern, high-rise portion of the building. The overall aesthetics of this building have been arranged by the project team and specifically the project architect to have a very transitional architecture, where there's a good reflection of the historic nature of the powerhouse at the base, and then that modern design on the elevation. But in terms of massing, that's where the deviation request occurs. And again, there's no increase in FAR. We're not dealing with any sort of request like that. It's really just the massing of the building, that step-back at the upper floors. The other two are with respect to the bulkhead. This plan, oddly enough, requires stucco as the only material. You're allowed to finish bulkhead walls. We are proposing an upgrade in terms of material for brick and metal to match the overall aesthetics, and it also requires to not be visible from across the street at a viewing height of five feet. So you do see this bulkhead, but again, I think the aesthetic materials help wrap it all into the design, and was mentioned earlier with the lights, it creates that cap of the building. So you probably didn't even know that that was the screening for the mechanical, because it does create a nice visual element at the top of the building. The last, the other variance from the LDO is with rooftop mechanical equipment. That does limit 20% of the upper story to be mechanical. We are proposing 27.8. This is really just a function of how much square footage is needed for the mechanical equipment of this building. Again, it's 1.3 acres. There's a lot of components to this building, and most of the mechanical equipment is on the upper story, creating that variance request. We did do a round of preliminary mechanical engineering review to get to that coverage of 27.8%, but this is early in terms of a final mechanical design, so we landed at that proposed number. And the request for the variance. Lastly, we are requesting a deviation from the redevelopment plan for parking. We have both commercial and residential uses. We are providing sufficient number of spaces for the retail. The deviation request comes specifically for the residential, so these are dedicated residential spaces. Overall, the requirement is 453 spaces, where we're proposing the 210 spaces. The residential ratio is 0.7 spaces per unit, where we are proposing from a residential component, 0.32. So we're about half of the required. We did discuss just general marketing for or viability for owner providing off-street parking spaces in the downtown setting. That was done internally. We also coordinated with city planning to understand what the current ratios that newer redevelopment plans are putting in place, which do range from 0.5 as a maximum to 0.25 in that range, so we fall within that kind of more contemporary parking ratio that you'd find in a newer redevelopment plan that's in the downtown. Notwithstanding those two pieces of information, we are within walking distance to mass transit. So hang on, I had my details here for one minute, just give me a moment. So we are within walking distance to all three mass transit options, with grocery pass station, exchange place pass station, and the Hudsonburg and Light Rail harbor-side station, as well as the waterfront ferry. So this is a very supported area. We're encouraging the multimodal aspect of downtown living. We supply the sufficient number of bicycle spaces and are also activating the streetscape with the galleries, the retail, and that component. So that's the positive criteria with respect to the deviations. I hope I was clear, because there's different odds and ends going through that. With respect to the negative criteria, well, with respect to special reasons, I do believe that this furthers Purpose A, to guide appropriate development. We're consistent with the FAR standards. We're meeting all current requirements for flood hazard areas in terms of elevating the lobby and providing access. I also believe we're furthering special reasons for establishing appropriate population densities. That's Purpose E. Again, we're compliant with the FAR and the unit count and adding more density in the downtown area. And lastly, promoting a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. I think we've tailored all of these deviation requests with appropriate ways. A lot of them depend on the aesthetics of the building and how it's been designed, so I think we're certainly advancing that special reason. As we move to the negative criteria, I don't believe that this will be a substantial detriment to the general welfare. Any of these variance requests are really just finely detailed aspects of the redevelopment plan, from a planner's standpoint, that are goals to aim for. We've cited them specifically, but overall, the setback doesn't create any sort of major impacts on shadows in the surrounding area. From an aesthetic standpoint, it's still consistent with what you'd find in a downtown area. The parking, what we did was to try and find the appropriate balance of providing off-street parking that didn't inundate too many vehicles in the downtown area, creating more congestion on the streets. So we think that ratio actually helps reduce automobile dependency and has a better effect. And then with respect to the ground level, the setbacks required in the sidewalk widths are still sufficient. It occurs in minor spaces, and the mechanical utility percentage along Steuben, I think we discussed earlier about working with staff to enhance the safety along Steuben Avenue for any loading vehicles or vehicles entering and exiting the building. So that's really any detriment to the general welfare, I believe we've addressed. With respect to the zoning ordinance or zone plan, I mentioned at the top of my presentation that this is a surface parking lot. We work routinely with clients in the downtown area that are envisioning redevelopment. Usually they're located in redevelopment plans, especially in the downtown. So this project does help develop streets, sidewalks, public places that are safe, comfortable, interesting to the pedestrian, and reflect industrial past of the district. That's one of the goals of the redevelopment plan. Provide site improvements for the beautification of the redevelopment area, certainly of the streetscape with the proposed structure, as well as the arcade. There's more that I can recite, but I believe we are really truly meeting the intent and furthering the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan, notwithstanding the relief needed. Thank you, as always. That completes my testimony. Everyone wants a short planner until they get into court, and it's the opposite effect. So I hope I do my job well and... And ran through everything. So thank you very much for your time. All right, thank you, Mr. Height. I have no questions at this point. Anybody for Mr. Height?
Mr. Height, just cutouts of the parking, so you're saying 12 foot 11 inches or just 12 feet where the cutout is? And what is it, is it hitting the 16-foot mark, the rest of the block?
Yes. Yes, so it's only for the length of the pickup, drop-off, loading area, and then for the rest of the sidewalk.
12 feet or 12 feet 11 inches?
12 feet 11 inches.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all.
Okay, anybody else for Mr. Height?
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, is that your presentation?
That's our presentation. I just want to thank the board for hearing us this evening, and again, we're very excited for this project, not only for the development itself, but the other aspects that are going to be for the public use as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, let's open it up for a public comment. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Please come on up.
Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Please come on up.
I do. Yes, my name is Christine, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-E, last name is Hui, H-U-I. Yes, 311 Washington Street, apartment 70 in Jersey City.
Good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. So I am a resident at 311 Washington and this building is on the same lot as the proposed 107 Morgan Street building. And our main concern is the health of the residents, specifically, sorry, specifically those living in the units that the three levels of proposed garage vents would face. When the issue was raised directly with the developers during a meeting on December 3rd, they did not indicate that there would be any additional mechanical exhaust elsewhere. However, per an email from the councilman's office I received back in May, it was communicated that the councilman's office reached out to the planning department and was specifically told if the preliminary plans show venting on only one side, there must be mechanical exhaust located elsewhere. None of the plans that we have seen otherwise suggest that there will be any sort of ventilation for the garage levels on the other sides of the building. During the same meeting on December 3rd, Elcor and their architect placated residents by saying that the exhaust won't be pumping constantly and that air will flow upwards. However, even if there is ventilation that is on the 311 side of the building and it is nominally pointed upwards, I hope you understand that that doesn't avoid the problem as the neighboring 311 building rises above the podium level where the exhaust will exit. Elcor has repeatedly said that they need to have a building that wraps around the street side. However, I have not seen or heard of a building with this requirement. Additionally, walking around Jersey City, there's no large apartment building that directly vents into another building from such a close proximity of about 25 feet. While it may be a little more aesthetically pleasing to have a building wrap, I believe this poses large health concern for many of the residents at 311 Washington. For developers that keep speaking about community and how they've donated two lots to the city to be repurposed for community use, I don't believe this is altruistic with no benefit to them as a development company. Specifically to their garage plan, this seemingly explicitly fails to consider the community and health of their future neighbors, who would be directly impacted. I urge you as a planning committee to review their garage ventilation plans, not just with the codes and applicable standards in mind, but also with resident health, as I don't believe any of you tonight would like to live in such close proximity to carbon monoxide and other fumes entering your homes on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Counsel, do you want to address?
I can, or do you want to, public to finish and us address everything all at once?
Let's do that. But let's keep a list of things we need to address. Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Moore?
Good evening.
I missed the remote.
Same.
Yes. Catherine Moore, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N-M-O-O-R-E, and I live at 140 Bay Street. Couple housekeeping real quick. The 16-foot sidewalk is actually being subtracted from the traffic lane, not from the building's square footage. So the traffic lane will be narrower, just so, to make that clear. Also, on all three sides are power wires. Curious if the power wires are going to be underground or if there's anything that can be reduced because all three sides have power lines. Is there remediation of the land? Will there be a cap? And can you have plant wells with capping? So just kind of thinking about for the landscaping. There is parking on the Steuben Street on the south side of the street. So the way the trucks back in will affect the parking that is on the south side of the street. The residential parking, it's being reduced by a lot. And with the bonuses, there's more units and there's even less parking. Basically, in the redevelopment plan from the very beginning, they wanted to have some opportunities within some of the buildings that you could have parking that could be set aside for residents, for visitors, for the retail. This is something that would be, you know, accommodated. And we're not really seeing, we're running out of lots and there's really not many more opportunities to do it. Like right now, there's only one building out of all the new ones that were built that can be, that's public. Everything else is all private. So, you know, they're suggesting is just like, well, maybe, you know, the people over in Metro Plaza can give us some parking. But this is just another opportunity where we're missing that opportunity to add parking for all the residents because we have overdeveloped over time and we're all sort of scrutinizing the last few lots that are available. So over, you know, 800 units were built with only 100 parking spaces. So we have many buildings that don't have any parking at all. So reducing this kind of can be a problem. We're just not quite sure. So we're just sort of, you know, wondering if we can really kind of make some kind of side with that. In that also, we have three theaters as well as commercial spaces with employees. So where are they going to park as well? So we're just sort of taxed as to where we can find people to park because there is very limited and now they're narrowing the streets even more to make the sidewalk wider. So that also can cause a little bit of issues over on Morgan Street for traffic flow. Within Butler Brothers Warehouse, they were supposed to be able to have, to be accommodated for additional parking. In the redevelopment plan, it's like a shall kind of thing. And just sort of curious, you know, they have nine retail spaces for possibly the retail spaces within 107. But do you have retail space for the Butler Brothers as well? To, you know, have further parking for the retail spaces, as well as the new community center, which is part of the Butler Brothers Warehouse complex, if you could call it that. And so that's in there. And... Yeah, we need parking for the residents and the visitors. So reducing it by half really does, unfortunately, and not making it public, having public accessibility is a detriment to the neighborhood. Because we're not done yet. We only have like two lots left after this. And we need some parking. So municipal parking or something. We've taxed ourselves. And I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. That was your time. But thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else from public? Anybody else from public?
Motion to close the public.
Second.
Okay. A motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Counsel, what do you got for us?
Yeah, I just want to address a couple of the comments we got there. I'll start with my one. As to the accommodation for the Butler Building, the Butler Building was redeveloped with its own parking. The way this actually reads is it shall provide for the parking to accommodate redevelopment of the Butler Brothers Warehouse. It's been redeveloped. The only thing that wasn't in there was their retail parking. If you look on our plans, we are actually providing the retail space that would have been required in the Butler Building within our building. We were required four spaces, excuse me, we were required five spaces. They were required four. So we are accommodating with it in the building. As to the ventilation, I'm going to let Paul speak to that. And then I will let Gabby come up and deal with some of the other questions, comments from Ms. Moore.
Okay.
All right. So to address the items related to the two questions, I think they were broken into the wrapping of the garage with active space. That's a requirement of parking structures under site improvements under J of the redevelopment plan. So it does require you to have active space and not have parking at the facade. So we did it on three sides. That's three street facing sides. The exhaust requirement is twofold. One, there's garage exhaust requirement requires that you separate from a property line three feet. Intake, you would need to separate 10 feet. So at the fourth floor where the first residential unit is on 311 Washington, we're about 36 feet from that building. The velocity of air that's coming out of that exhaust, although it runs constant, it runs at a slow pace. It's in a lined duct so that there's sound attenuation, so it's not noisy. And there's not a lot of velocity. So it is our opinion and the opinion of the engineer that the air will never get anywhere near 36 feet because it's just to exhaust air that is in the garage. So it's not noxious. It's environmental air. That's my response.
Okay.
So on a windy day or just a humid day, you're saying basically it would never blow?
I'm saying it's to the...
Next question then.
Right. I feel like that...
What are the chances of making it go higher than the level that affected the building across the... They're saying they're at the third level. Is there any way of exhausting it at a different height level that does not affect the people that are that close? Because you're asking for a setback, a minimum setback at the third level, right?
Well, the location of the exhaust would be at levels three and four of the parking garage. The parking garage, the parking garage is exhausting to the exterior. If we were to bring anything up to the sixth floor, you're saying, like come up through the sixth floor terrace?
Roof, whatever it is, whatever it takes.
The roof isn't a viable solution because it's 34 stories in the air. So I feel like that's not viable for parking. It would require heavier equipment to get the air 35 stories. So I feel like the velocity of air, in our opinion, will not reach the 36-foot separation because the code only requires three feet anyway. So the code does take into consideration, you know, requirements and neighbors. And the code is written to protect the neighbors, not...
Yes, yes. I understand that.
Can I answer the question? Will it ever get to their side? I can't answer that positively, but I could say with the best of our knowledge, we don't believe it'll ever get there.
So, okay. Then with that said, is there any other chance of trying to make it? Because we're asking for a minimum setback on the garage level, right? On those two floors?
Those floors are setback. They're required separate.
Required setback?
Right. It meets a required setback.
Okay. So basically, so you're meeting that part?
Correct.
Yeah, there's no variance of setback along the edge.
So I guess, hopefully, you consider some other way of getting it pumped out to a different level that doesn't affect the people there, but I understand what you're saying by code. I got you. I understood. You answered my question.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gornelli is going to come up.
Sure.
So the two points to address are the sidewalk width and the loading on Steuben. So the sidewalk, the redevelopment plan actually has a maximum setback from the property line for the building. And that maximum setback is 10 feet while still requiring a 16 and a half foot sidewalk. So the redevelopment plan is encouraging that sidewalk to be pushed into the right-of-way, to kind of push the building closer to the street because we have all that retail frontage. And then also the loading. There is parking on the south side of Steuben Street. I thought your question was regard to the north side where the loading is. We will review our truck maneuvering and I believe we can make it work such that it wouldn't be impacting the parking on the southern side of the street.
What about the, is there remediation being done? And is it being capped? What's going to happen?
I don't. I don't know the answer to that.
The answer is yes. Yes. So there will be remediation done at the site. They will have to go through the entire process with DEP. They'll have to provide a cap. There'll be a remedial action plan and all the things that they'll need to do to comply with that cap.
And Counsel, I guess we wouldn't know at this point.
We would not know at this point.
As to what is necessary in terms of the cap.
That's correct. Yes.
But obviously, that goes without saying that...
We're going to need that permit too, correct.
In order to get that permit.
We will have to go through that process, yes.
So, Chairman, as far as this board is concerned, that's another governmental agency that has to sign off before anything that we do will be acted upon.
All right. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Matt?
Matt? Anything?
Yeah. Staff prepared a memo dated December 3rd, 2024. They testified briefly at the beginning of the testimony of this item about the bonus that they satisfied at 335 Washington Street pursuant to the redevelopment plan that got them an extra additional 100 feet in height and four FAR for this subject site. They are also required to do a significant open space. They've located it mid-block between the two parallel streets. It's entitled the Arcade. They talked to it many times tonight. That is to be publicly open, a publicly accessible open space. And staff recommends that that area not be gated. It was once proposed to be gated. It is removed now and shown and presented tonight without gates. And a developer's agreement will govern the management and operation of that open space. And staff will be looking to see it open to the public 5:00 AM to midnight daily and at least walking through between midnight and 5:00 AM. We do have several staff conditions. There is one put on the record regarding, working with staff regarding the lighting at the top of the building. But there are 10 other conditions that are in the memo that staff would recommend should the board make a motion to approve this application. Staff does recommend approval and we are here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Counsel?
Yeah, I think we also had another condition about working with staff on the city lights or light warnings for the garage.
Thank you very much.
Otherwise, we agree to the conditions. As I stated on the record, we are going to have to work with the city on a plaza agreement. We are completely okay with the hours that Matt has put into his memo. We would just ask the board, ask that the board acknowledge there will obviously be times when that plaza is closed for maintenance, safety reasons, snow removal. Just so, you know, it is meant to be 24/7, but there will be times in lieu of a gate, there might be a sign that says close for maintenance or something like that.
But no private events?
No private events, I believe.
Okay. So we can put that on record?
In our purio. No private events.
Okay.
Okay. No private events, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So anybody, any questions for Matt?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P 2024-0076 as presented to the board tonight with variations, I mean with the, yeah, conditions imposed.
Okay. Motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
I like the plan. I think you guys did a really good job of, you know, having a throwback to the pad and then that modern kind of building on top. I really like the open spaces for the public. I think it's going to be really good. I live not too far from there, but far enough that I didn't have to, you know, trigger an abstention. But it is, I've always looked at that spot and thought, when is it going to be built? And what's going to go there? And I think that you guys hit it and I just hope it gets done and we don't see you back again. So I vote aye.
Commissioner Granik? Councilwoman Prinsari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
I, previous case earlier today, I did mention that I do work in the mechanical parts of a building for a living. That's what I do. But, so I do agree with the code of the exhaust being, you know, three feet or 10 feet, you know. I agree with that statement and that comment. But, so for the people that came out today, hopefully just giving them a peace of mind as the project goes over. If you could find some other way of doing it and easing the neighbors, your neighbors thought on it, it'd be a nice thing. I really like the building. There's a wise guy, a wise man on this board, that chairman, that stays. If you need some help with that brickwork, we know where to get it for you. So just reach out. I think that brickwork is going to be beautiful, matching a powerhouse. It's an architectural engineer setting that powerhouse. So to try to match it is a challenge. So like I said, we do know people that can help you. And it's, I like that look for the powerhouse district with that. I'm going to vote aye for this project.
Commissioner Stomato? Commissioner Dr. Desai?
I vote aye.
And Chairman Langston?
My mic's off. I'm a no on the parking. My mic's off. I'm a no on the parking. I think if, you know, this is the plan the building is in. If, if we think the other plans are a better fit for the city, let's change the plan. We're hitting half here of what's required. So I, to me, I think that's, you know, even though I'm usually the pedestrian guy on the board, and let's change the plan if we think the plan is wrong, rather than go for the deviation. So I'm a no just based on the parking.
Motion carries one against and six four.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Five?
Five.
Three.
Three? Can we get you down to three?
Do two.
Okay, so we're going to-
It'll be quicker than asking for an adjournment.
Where are you, 15, right? Yeah, case, okay, I'm going to call, I swear he says five minutes tops. Case P 2024-0090, minor subdivision for 34 Jefferson Avenue.
Sure. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuvell and Misselli, on behalf of the applicant, 3234 Jefferson JCNJ LLC. What you see on the agenda is basically the application before you. We're here this evening seeking a minor subdivision of an existing lot that measures 5,462 square feet. We're proposing to subdivide that into two separate lots measuring approximately 2,700 square feet each. We have no variances associated with the application. The lot widths will exceed, they will meet the 25-foot requirement, and the overall lot area will exceed the 2,500 square foot requirement. With that, I have one witness this evening. I've never really done this before, but I have the project surveyor because there's no site plan associated with this application, and I just wanted to have some experts sworn in and put testimony on the record.
Swearing testimony to give tonight something to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, from the state's buyer.
It's Rodolfo, R-O-D-O-L-F-O-Pieri, P-I-E-R-R-I.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. I don't believe who we've qualified you in the past, but you're a licensed surveyor in the state of New Jersey?
That's correct.
And that license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified then.
So Ron, I'll just ask you very briefly. The survey that's on the portal this evening, you prepared that survey, and that is your license and signature on that survey?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and can you just confirm for the record the proposed lot sizes affiliated with our subdivision?
Yes, the lot sizes are, you know, the original lot was 50 by approximately 110, and we're proposing to divide it to two 25 by approximately 110-foot deep lots, all conforming to the zoning area.
Okay, so Ron, we're not proposing any actual structure as part of this application?
Not that I know of.
Okay. And lastly, just to confirm, in your review of the zoning, in a limited capacity to the lot area and lot width and really site dimensions, it's your opinion that they comply with the zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, they do.
Chairman, that's really all I have on this application.
Okay. Are we talking curb cut in the future?
I don't believe so. I know that this board has a, has a specific request that if there is going to be one, it would be shared. We have no issue with that. If there's obviously any zoning in effect that would prevent that, we're also comfortable with that as well.
Okay. You have something?
So counsel, I think at the time, you would be making an application, I guess it would be a minor site plan application, if, at all. And if you got to get a curb cut, you'd have to do it then to subdivide. It's an as-of-right subdivision, creating the two lots. But I guess when you go to develop, you would have to address how you lay out the house and if you trigger any relief.
Right. It would either be compliant, you know, with your ordinance and honestly not require any appearance before any board, or it would not comply and therefore likely require an appearance before the zoning board, assuming it's for bulk variances. And if it requires site plan as well, then back before this board.
So that's my concern, is that it doesn't have to go to an approval process. It's just an application, and it doesn't go to a zoning board or a planning board. And now we have two curb cuts on opposite sides of the properties.
Oh, no. What we can do is we can condition the approval of the subdivision that that would not be the case.
On a single curb cut.
Correct.
On one single curb cut. That's where I'm going.
Yeah.
So can we have, you agree to a condition, one single curb cut deeded to both properties?
Yes, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Chairman, I just wanted to mention that actually off-street parking is prohibited for both lot. Because in our zoning standard, we say like off-street parking is prohibited on interior lot with a lot less than 26 feet. And then this lot is 25 feet, and off-street parking is not predominant. So this is prohibited for both lot. So in my staff report, a row existing curb cut shall be removed and sidewalk shall be fixed for future development. So there shouldn't be a-
But I guess the condition would be, if there's ever an application in the future-
Yes.
-that we would not permit more than one curb cut.
Right, correct.
If you can get any.
Correct. Yeah, that, that's where I was going with it, Ms. Wang. It's, it's, yes, I don't believe that we're permitted curb cuts, but to the extent that there was an application in the future requesting a curb cut and a variance for that, it would be limited to a single curb cut, the variance request.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, just in case this doesn't get developed and, you know, the-
Sorry if that was less than clear. I'm trying to keep this-
That's okay.
Relatively.
In case they try. And Mr. Wine, for the record, will mark the notices A1. So thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are there two curb cuts now at that existing property?
Ron, can you check the survey?
Um, no, I don't.
What they're saying is you're going to put the sidewalk back the way it's supposed to be.
Yes.
When is that going to happen?
That is going to be part of, so procedurally, what would happen is we have to perfect the subdivision, assuming it's approved this evening. So within 190 days from the date of the resolution, we have to file the subdivision with Hudson County. We'll require your, your signature as well, and, or your chairman's signature. And, and in, at that point, if there's a, my belief, and Mr. Lampkin can correct me if I'm wrong, if there's a condition of approval that we need to meet all the conditions listed in Ms. Wang's staff report, as well as anything else on the record tonight, part and parcel of signing that subdivision deed will include confirming that that work will be done.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, that's it?
That would conclude my presentation.
Okay. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application?
Seeing no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. General, anything?
Um, I don't have anything else other than that. So I just want to ask the applicants to agree to the conditions.
Yes, we do.
And we ask that for comment approval.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2024-0090 as presented to the board tonight with the conditions outlined.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinsari?
Aye.
Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries, swing in favor.
Thank you, and I appreciate the board indulging us this evening.
Thank you.
Take care.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
I apologize.
No worries.
I didn't think that was going to go anywhere near as long as it-
You would be both. I tried to.
I thought we would be close. I thought we'd be close, so.
You could lie to yourselves.
That's probably true as well.
I tried to counsel him in the office to move along.
Cam, how do we look on scheduling?
Not good.
Um, I mean-
Definitely in 2025.
Yes, and I really, I have item 14, 17, and the one I previously adjourned is 18. They, all three of them are cases that were originally listed in October. So-
They're new to us.
If, yeah, I'd really like-
I don't have a problem just putting them on the next agenda. You know as well as I do. Well, I don't know, that might go quicker now.
But they-
The, the January 7th is probably better because January 28th, there's talks of something that's probably going to end up taking a very long time going on that. But January 7th has 87 Bright, so they're- Yeah, that might change.
If it's possible to put these before 87 Bright, they're all pretty quick. One, I mean, I've got one, the 14 is designated redeveloper with affordable housing. So that's all squared away. The, the 17 is just amendments to a, a pre-existing site plan that should take all of 10 minutes, if that. And then, then the last one, 18, is another one of the homestead projects, which this board is, you know, seen so many times. So none of them are, are long and complicated.
It's established that everybody says that nothing is long and nothing is complicated. And we can't get out of the block on some of these things.
But this time, I mean it.
I swear.
The other times, I lied to you.
Um, I'll just go with the 7th.
Just keep loading them up.
Yeah. Put it on the 7th. 18 might be the tough one.
Yeah, well-
I think you're going to need a little more time on 18.
Under, understood. The other, yeah, the other two, I'll put on the record, I'd rather, the other two are, are very, very simple. And, you know, they're, they're small projects that they, you know, they've been kicking around. I, I know 18, the client wants to move forward, but he's, he's not going into the ground, you know, in the next three, four months. So that's not as urgent.
Okay.
18, 28? We'll put them on this, no, we'll put them on, put them all on the 7th. Okay. But we'll see if we can get those, those other two up a little higher. Okay. All right. We'll see what happens with- We will. Other things on the agenda. All right? Understood. All right. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Yeah, we could just start staying later. We move on to resolutions, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. I think there's 15. So I'll start. Resolution number one of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, amendments to the Morris Canal Redevelopment Plan, case number P 2024-0177. Resolution number two is of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant 248 Erie, owner LLC for preliminary major site plan approval with deviations, 248 Erie Street and 209-215 15th Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 7105, lots 1, 2, and 3, case number P 2024-0019. Number three is resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, case P 2023-0039 for site plan with variances, applicant 215 Van Vors Development LLC, address at 215 Van Vors Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 14205, Lot 9. Fourth resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City for approval and recommendation of amendments to Chapter 105 demolition and Chapter 131 construction codes, uniforms, and Chapter 160 fees and charges and Chapter 345 zoning. Fifth, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City for approval and recommendation of amendments to Chapter 345 zoning. Number six, resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board, case number P 23-044, applicant 604-608 Communipaw LLC, address at 604-606 Communipaw Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 17905, Lot 24 and 25, decided on Tuesday, September 24, 2024, memorialized on Tuesday, December 10, 2024. Application for preliminary and final major site plan approval. Number seven, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant is Harmony House Holdings LLC for a preliminary and final major site plan approval, 174-178 Martin Luther King Drive and 205, pardon, 204 Stegman Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 25001, Lot 66 and 68.01, case number P 2024-0038. Number eight, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City approving minor site plan approval, case number P 2024-0003, submitted by T-Mobile Northeast LLC, 412 Witten Street, Block 17505, Lot 17.01. Number nine, resolution of the planning, of the Jersey City Planning Board, is applicant Plaza 8 and 9 Associates LLC for extensions of preliminary and final major site plan approval of 3 Second Street Rear and 242 Hudson Street, Block 11603, lots 22 and 27, case number P 2024-0216. Tenth resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City is applicant Plaza 8 and 9 Associates LLC for extension of preliminary and final major site plan approval, 3 Second Street Rear and 242 Hudson Street, Block 11603, lots 22 and 27, case number P 2024-0216. Number 11, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City amended preliminary and final major site plan, submitted by John and Mary Ann LLC at 187 Culver Avenue, Block 22102, Lot 8.01, case number P 2024-0026. Number 12, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City approving an application filed by Liberty Harbor North Partners LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval, applicant Liberty Harbor North Partners LLC for preliminary and final major site plan, case number P 2024-0118. Number 13, resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of 457 Ogden Avenue, application number P 2024-0123, decided November 12, 2024, memorialized December 10, 2024, is an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances relief. Number 14, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, case number P 2024-0176, for a one-year extension of approval of preliminary and final major site plan with C variances, applicant is BJ Power LLC, address at 65650 Grand Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 15403, Lot 12.01. Final resolution of the Planning Board of, Board of the City of Jersey City, case number P 2024-0187, for a one-year extension approval for preliminary and final major site plan, applicant 241 MLK Drive LLC, address 241 MLK Drive, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 23404, Lot 30.
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinsari?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor to memorialize resolutions.
You're kidding?
No.
Okay. Motion to adjourn second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I appreciate you here.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Happy holidays.
Just in case I don't say that.
My friend, Merry Christmas, my friend.